Okay, I'll ask Mr. Shelton to provide us with the highlights of the addendums to the agenda and the reasons for having them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two addenda before you. The first one came out late last week on the Thursday, and one just this afternoon that has some additional information on it. So with the first addendum, we have a PowerPoint presentation by our financial business analyst regarding the smart water meter project, and it ties into items one and 11 on the agenda. Next item is Mr. Ron Palmer, principal of the planning partnership, would be making a presentation regarding item six, which deals with the Parkland Dedication Bylaw. Item thirty is Development and Infrastructure Services, Engineering Services Report that deals with the Water Street Crossing update, number four, for information. And in the second addendum, there's a brief presentation by the commissioner in that area. Item thirty-one, correspondence from Ms. Rhonda Flanagan, Director of Resource Development for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of York, requesting a proclamation of September 2016 as Big Brother/Big Sister Month. And item thirty-two, correspondence from Mr. Adam Miller of Rubenstein Communications, requesting that Riverwalk Commons be lit in red from September 5th to the 9th, 2016, in honor of Stand Up To Cancer. So the second addendum then has a piece of correspondence from Mr. Paul Bailey of Basil Developments, requesting deferral of consideration of item seven of the agenda, and that is being a staff report related to the Coordinated Provincial Plans Review. And regarding this item, the Commissioner of Development and Infrastructure Services will speak to the timing of the review, tying it into the expectation for comments at the regional level. Item nine A in the second addendum is a PowerPoint presentation related to item nine of the agenda by the Commissioner of Development and Infrastructure Services and the Director of Engineering, related to the Ray 20 LID, so low-impact development design, and Lyons Park Drainage Update. And item twelve A is a deputation by Ms. Victoria Kern regarding item twelve and the agenda being potential regulations of the driving school, or for driving school instructors. And item thirty A, PowerPoint presentation related to item thirty, as I mentioned, which is the Water Street Crossing, and that will be done by the Commissioner of Development and Infrastructure. In addition, there are three items on the closed agenda that deal with potential land acquisitions, being items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine of the agenda. And I think that's it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any questions or clarification as to why these items are included on the agenda? There being none, then we'll wait. Well, we are at one thirty already. So I'll call this the meeting to order. There are some additions to the agenda as outlined by our CAO. Could I have a motion, please, to amend our agenda to include these items? Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Bazantz, any discussion? All those in favor. As carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, then I'll go forward. And what I might do is, given that we've got a number of presentations that relate to the, some very substantive items that we're dealing with, I'll go with counsel's concurrence. I'll go directly to receiving a deputation from Mr. Sam Hindle. Mr. Hindle?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Item number one of the--
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Item number one of the closed session items, number two. As I do own a piece of property in the area, I think it's my preference that we, right on that street, actually, so it's my preference that we maybe vote on that or make recommendations separately on those items. So we won't be taking part in the discussion.
All right, so we've noted the declaration in. Item number one in the closed session. Thank you. Yes, and before we start the deputation, there is an announcement that I'm going to seek an advice from our new commissioner. Esther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council and our audience today, it is my pleasure to introduce the new director of legal services, Karen Rayner, who is seated beside me. Karen has been the town senior solicitor since 2013, and prior to that, she was solicitor with the region of York, primarily working with the Viva Lands Project. And we're very happy that Karen has accepted the position and is bringing all of her municipal experience, both regional and local, to this table and to the town. And, yeah, very excited to have her, so welcome.
Great. Thank you. Welcome aboard. So you've been engaged with the town for a while, so you know what you're getting into, and I'm glad you decided to do so. Thank you. Let's hear the deputation from Mr. Hindle then, please. My deputation permit up to five minutes?
Good afternoon, Town Council.
If you could, Sam, if you could have a chair, please. This way the microphone can pick you up. This is broad, we are streaming this, okay?
Okay.
That's okay. No, no. Yep, and the microphone is in the center, maybe. So if you get close to that, that would be better. That way our viewing audience will also be able to hear what you have to say.
Good afternoon, Town Council. I would like to ask the Town Council to help me protect my property, lot thirteen of 589 Stephen Court. The owners of lot fourteen at 569 Stephen Court dumped their snow on my lot. And I don't know who to give the pictures to.
Can we link that to it?
According to the approved site plan approval dated May the ninth, 2002, the owners were supposed to install concrete curbs at 1.7 meters from my lot line. As they are encroaching on my property, this was 14 years ago. When will the town enforce 569 Stephen Court to install the curbs? The neighbors, tenants, dump garbage and tires on my ditch, and I am forced to remove them. Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Take them, well, I don't have them, okay. Jim Pappus removed a number of curbs on the northeast side of the property and threw scrap concrete on my property. I was told by Jennifer Lindsay to remove the rubbish, even though I told her that Jim's employees moved them onto my lot. After I cut the grass on the north side of my lot, the tenants at 569 Stephen Court jumped the curb and parked their vehicles on my grass, on my lot thirteen. In order to prevent some of the above, I installed a snow fence on my property. Jim Pappus told me deliberately he removed it because the poly was scratching his tenants' vehicles, even though the snow fence was put on my lot. After I removed the snow fence, he continued to dump the snow on my property. I would like to know what is an authorized town of Newmarket snow fence, as I was told what I had erected was not a town of Newmarket authorized snow fence. This will probably be necessary to avoid future problems. I would like to ask Town Council if I can fill in the ditch on my property and flatten out the land so we can cut the grass on my vacant lot with a riding lawnmower. Due to the dumping of Jim's snow on my lot, he saturated his property with so much snow that it took months to dry up. The water, as you can see, stays on my property and does not interfere with his lot. There is a high-water table in this area. The only reason there is a ditch is that it draws the water from the rear of my building. Why must my property contain all the water from the surrounding area? That is not, that is not why I brought the lot. None of my neighbors have retaining ponds. Why must I have one? I just want to make my lot look pleasant to the look. I have hired an engineer and an excavator, but before we can proceed, we want to be sure we are meeting the town's requirements. At this point, we have been unable to obtain anything in writing from the towns of Newmarket's engineering department outlining how a cut and fill-- Engineering Department outlining how a cut and fill can be done. This was suggested by Brandon Eward, Senior Engineer with the Town of Newmarket, and he mentioned that I would need a permit. This would still mean we would need to know the town's requirements in writing, so my contractors can comply. This would be the only solution, as it is too difficult for landscapers to cut the grass in the ditch. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you. I do have you at five minutes. It would be appropriate to receive this deputation then and refer that to staff for consideration review. Counselor? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Baker. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this information will be conveyed on to staff, and you should have your discussion directed with staff on those issues, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Twitty?
Sir, Ms. Perk, can we get maybe some information from staff now on, if they can't answer exactly, maybe some of the questions for, at this moment, for Mr. Hindle, or if at least maybe a timeframe of when we could, he could expect to get this information?
Okay.
No, I'm just wondering it for us, too, so we know.
Okay. Thank you. And we've received your deputation. Then I'll ask Mr. Nohammer to respond to those questions. Let's wait for Mr. Hindle to take a seat. No, no, the other seat. We've received your deputation, so I'll ask you to go back into the audience. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Nohammer?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, we will review these matters. I understand there's some review that's already taken place with staff, as mentioned, and we'll follow up on that with Mr. Hindle. I can't speak personally as to the nature of the review that's already taken place, but we'll do that in a timely manner. And we have the Director of Engineering here as well, and so I'm sure we'll follow up very, very soon.
Time, it's an approximate time?
Yeah, just, I think because some of the concerns were, too, with regards to snow and et cetera, so would this be something to be expected by, I guess, you know, sixty days kind of thing? Just so that, yeah, just that it's, I guess, appropriate to, action can be taken at the-
I'll ask the Director of Engineering, Rachel Prudham.
Ms. Prudham?
Yes, absolutely, maximum sixty days. But just to make council feel better, we have met on site with Mr. Hindle, and we are aware of the situation. We have spoken with his consulting engineer very recently, in the past two weeks or so, and this matter is already being handled.
Okay.
Thank you. Regional counselor?
Thanks very much. It also sounds like it's a potential engineering issue in terms of the work that's desired, but then there's also bylaws a component to it. And don't need to get into it now, but maybe, I think since we've had a deputation, if, after the meetings regarding engineering aspects, and if bylaws could look into a little bit about what's occurred and what's, what steps could be taken, if any, and then if we could just get something back so that, I mean, because I don't think we're going to get a formal report back, which I don't think is necessary, but some sort of just memo to council, so we know where this has gone and what, what steps have been taken.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now, let's deal with the items to be dealt with separately.
You can do that, too. There was another deputation.
Yep. And that is with respect to the-
If you want to do it in some time, you can-
I do know that we do have a deputation request with respect to the driving schools, and that is item number-
Item 12.
Item number 12. So, given that we have a deputation, we'll deal with that report separately. Okay? And 30 is because there's presentations, yep. And number nine, and number six, we'll deal with those separately. Counselor Kerwin, number 10. Okay. Counselor Twitty?
In addition, 5 and 18.
And number 5, 18. Regional counselor?
If this, if any of these are done, I apologize, but 6, 7, 14, and 10, and 30's already pulled, right? And 5's pulled, yeah. 6, 7, 14, and 10, as well as 5 and 30, which were already-
Okay.
Number 12 is pulled because we do have a deputation.
Any other items? Counselor Kerwin?
No, that's mine.
Okay, that's good.
I just wanted you to list the numbers that are-
All right. I'll do that. So, have I got everyone's comments? All right. So, what I'm looking for then is a motion to deal with all items, with the exceptions of Items number 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 14, 18. And I-
And Action Item Number 26 regarding the library block.
And Item Number 26 is an action item?
That's right.
And Item Number 30 is being dealt with separately. Now, is Item Number 14 being dealt with separately? It is. Okay, that's good. All right. I think that covers my items as well. Now, on Item Number 5, Mr. Sheldon, there were some just administrative corrections. Was that addressed? Let's see, duplicates have-
There was one item that we were looking at not related to, essentially as a percentage as opposed to a decimal. Right now, I think it's shown as .40 dollars, and I think it's to be 40 percent. If I could just confirm that with our commissioner?
That's on page 53.
Esther, the one item on the percentage? Just check that with the Director of Finance, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. And there appear to be duplicates on page 27 and 29.
Yes, there are a couple of pages. You'd be approving two pages twice.
Okay. And then 46.
We'll correct that on the version that goes on the web.
All right. I'll leave those as administrative corrections. Okay. So, does everybody, Claire, can I have a motion then to deal with those? Oh, Mr. Sheldon?
Just get that confirmation. Sought right now on whether it is 40 percent.
Mr. Mayor, it is corrected.
So, it's 40 cents.
That's my understanding. If you'd like that explained, I think we'll ask the Director of Recreation and Culture to just set out how that fee would be applied.
I, I think it to be dealt with administratively.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, again, then, could I have, I do have a motion to deal with, with Items 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 14, 18, 30. Have that motion? Can I have a, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Start with our first presentation, and that is with respect to, hmm. Yeah, we do have a deputation. So, again, with counsel's concurrence, let's deal with Item Number 12, Counselor Kerwin, and then let's receive that deputation. The deputation request is, is from Ms. Victoria Kern. So, if Victoria could come forward, we'll speak to Item Number 12, which is the Driving School Report, and we permit up to five minutes. If you press the button in the center?
Red button.
The red button in the center.
Okay. Hi. I didn't actually bring anything, and so I'll be speaking off the cuff, so I won't probably take five minutes. But I read the recommendations for the possible regulation of the driving schools, and as a resident of Wildwood, I'm relatively new to Newmarket. I've only lived here eight years, but so many people on our street are seniors and young children, and I've, I've communicated with Dave Kerwin and Jane Twitty, and so they're very aware, as probably there are other people in this auditorium from the area. The, the, the nature of our neighborhood has changed dramatically since the Drive Test Center opened. Not only do we get 42 to 63 certifications a day, that's the maximum, and it sure seems like they're operating at capacity, and I know that's a provincial matter, but on top of that, we get at least triple that amount of driving schools or private cars coming to the certification route. So, today, I came from work downtown, stopped in to get a sweater from my house. I was there 20 minutes, and I, there were three cars, one certification car, and I know because they don't have the sign on top, and I followed a Scarborough from Finch, Kings something, Kingsborough Driving School out of my street to get here. There is not a given half an hour on my street where there are not practiced drivers, and it's introducing a lot of strangers into our community. It's, we've already had one accident where the police were called in because a 16-year-old girl from, I believe it was Mississauga, I can't remember where she was from, but insecure driver and went up where there was no curb, because we don't have sidewalks. We're a small, small non-through street. When I spoke to the General Manager of the Drive Test Center, he told me that that's exactly what they were looking at for certification streets. But I find it hard to believe that without sidewalks with young children and seniors, that a car every 10, 15 minutes, given what month it is, because I'm sure that the Drive Test Center is going to go back up to 63 tests a day when school starts again, it just seems there, we need something. So, I'm here to say, on behalf of the Newmarket residents, please consider accepting the recommendations that have been put forward today, and I'm sure I'll see you all in November at the Public Awareness Night. But that's, that's all I wanted to say, that there are a lot of people who are really upset in, on Wildwood and I'm sure the other streets as well. So, if there was some way, like apparently Aurora has done, to, to regulate the drive schools, that would be fantastic. And that, I was pointed to that example by Chris Ballard's office. Brian Hutchins pointed out that Chris Brandt, who's now the Minister of Transportation, had put that in place in Aurora within 10 years. So, if it can happen in Aurora, I think it can happen here, and anything will be better than what we've got now. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's questions of clarification.
Okay.
Counselor Twitty, and then Counselor Kerwin.
I just have motion to receive. I don't have any questions of clarification right now. I have some questions to staff.
Okay. Counselor Kerwin?
Is it, at this point, I could make some comments, or?
Clarify the, and then we'll bring the report forward.
Just, just to let you know, there have been dozens of complaints, okay? And I have responded to, as you're well aware, you-
No, you've been great. Thank you.
My, my pleasure. It's not just Wildwood. It's also Hazelwood, it's Birchwood, it's Sparrow Road. And I really want to thank my colleague, Counselor Twitty, from Ward 3. It started up in Magnolia, really, and Baronia. Is that correct, Jane? And she's getting less of it now. I'm getting more of it.
Then I won't thank your colleague.
No, I thank her for raising the issue.
Yes.
Because she came, came to her attention before mine, because it hadn't affected Ward 2, but now it certainly has.
Right.
And, and I want to thank all the residents who have sent emails into either Peter Noyhammer or to Rachel Prudham. And it's, it will be my joy to work with the residents, with staff, to resolve this issue, because Wildwood has no sidewalks.
Absolutely.
And you're quite correct. And, you know, without sidewalks, you know, a child walks on the road. That's not where we want five different driving schools. And before the center was located on the Harry Walker Parkway, we did not have this issue nowhere across the town.
No.
But now, we're the center for basically all of York region. So, I understand your frustration. I understand the frustration of our traffic engineers, Mark Krasniewski in particular, because it's a very hard issue to deal with, and we have involved Chris Ballard, our MPP, and, but we will work diligently at resolving this issue, and hopefully, hopefully, and I don't want to superimpose this problem on anyone else's ward, but that is not the appropriate area. We've got to find somewhere where there isn't that kind of traffic, particularly children.
And, and the, they're vulnerable drivers, too. That 16-year-old who backed up parallel parking around a driveway because she was told to, went up the driveway, panicked, and gunned it and hit a car. I worry about that kind of driver around us with no sidewalks and children.
I, I as well, and I have been out there many times, and I, I've asked, different schools are about five, six different schools out there.
Oh, there's way more than that.
There's way more.
There is way more than that. I've started taking pictures.
So, anyway, I'll, I'll cut that off. Thank you for taking the time to come here. We have an issue. We have a concern, and I'm confident that we can resolve it. We resolved the Halton issue. It took us a while to do it, but we did that. So, thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
And I thank Rachel Prudham and her staff for tolerating some of my, my comments, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Then, any other questions of clarification of the deputant? Then being done, then Counselor Twitty, motion to receive, and to refer to Item Number 12, which we will call next. Counselor Kerwin, seconding that. All those in favor? That is carried. Now, Andrew?
Yes, there's Tom and Thelma Evenden.
Okay. And I understand that Tom and Thelma Evenden would like to make a deputation as well on this matter. Is that correct? Okay. Yep, you can be seated. We've got the microphone there, and we permit up to five minutes.
Oh, I won't take five minutes.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
Thank you.
I just want to say that everything that the former lady said is true. It's a nuisance. They're there all the time, and even as late as 7:30 last night, on a Sunday night, there was one right in front of our place on Hazelwood Drive. They're around first thing in the morning, they're around on holiday weekends, and they block traffic in many ways. One this morning pulled across the street to do a three-point turn. We were coming down Wildwood, and we had to sit and wait while they kind of played around, and I guess it was all, you know, described to her what she should do, but we had to wait considerable time while they got sorted out and moved out. So, we would certainly like to see something happen. We don't want sidewalks on the street, that's for sure, but it would be very nice to have this controlled in some way. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions of clarification for the deputation? Being done, then, a motion to receive?
I'll move.
Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Twitty, and referred to Item Number 12. All those in favor? And that is carried. Would be appropriate, then, to bring Item Number 12 forward? We have the recommendations. Counselor Twitty and Counselor Kerwin. Okay. Speaking to the recommendations, Counselor Twitty is the mover.
Yeah, thank you. Through Mr. Mayor to staff, I want to just thank you for getting it on to our agenda at our first meeting, because it is, has been quite a bit of an issue that started back last year. And just, I just want a quick question. We do have a PIC that's going to be happening in November, which is great. That will certainly give us the feedback and information that we can use to, to further strengthen perhaps some areas of, I guess, hopefully, of maybe licensing, et cetera, of the vehicles that are coming into the town. But my question is, one is with regards to Recommendation 1, are we going to be doing, it just says that we're doing a widespread PIC notice to the entire town, really specifically explaining what this is going to be about? Because there could be some, it could be misunderstood what this information is about, and we want to make sure that we get as many residents at the meeting to give some input as, and I'm sure, because we will be getting probably some of the license, some of the instructors probably- probably coming to that meeting as well. So just, that's more of a comment to just make sure that we, you know, I mean, we are going to be widespread, you know, notifying the town of Newmarket what this is going to be about. And my other, my question, though, is regards to regulation of the driving school instructors. And maybe I didn't read the report properly, but in here, it does say it would be impractical, impractical to regulate the training routes throughout the town by driving school instructors. But we can work collaboratively with the driving schools to encourage spreading training of the routes. So I thought that the town of Aurora did have a regulation in place, or I thought there was a regulation in place through the MTO that the instructors were not allowed to use the same routes as the routes that the MTO were using.
Mr. Brower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the, the focus of the review was more on how do we regulate the testing areas? So that was, that would sort of be the focus for the regulations. The point being made there is that it would be difficult, I think, from an enforcement perspective, to be able to control the routes of all the driving schools coming in and through the town. It is possible, something we want to flesh out through the PIC process, just to see how that would work. But that would essentially mean that we would, you know, create standards that we couldn't enforce. So the focus in Aurora and the focus in this report was on the testing areas and controlling, regulating that.
Okay. But they did have as well, with regards to licensing of instructors as well. I noticed, you know, one only has to drive down Leslie Street to see the number of instructors that are coming from the Greater Toronto Area all over. It's really increased dramatically in the last few months. But you notice on many, on all, like, on, on the back of them, you know, for example, Markham, I believe, they all have a license, like a taxi. So these people are basically in the same, I guess, sense that, that taxis are doing business here. They're doing business in the town of Newmarket and therefore should be-
Yes, through Mr. Mayor, that is the intent, is to, is practically speaking, we would be licensing the instructors, the folks that are in the car. And yes, that could be something along that lines. What we were trying to avoid is, is duplicating the licensing regime that's in place at the province. The province actually certifies and regulates the drivers, the training. They have to go through the, the safety brake that's used in the vehicle, for example. So we're trying not to duplicate that, but we are trying to control really the operation of the vehicles in the town. That's what we're, and so initially, we were looking at how do we do that within the testing area where the greatest nuisance is occurring? And then try to come up with something, working with the driving schools and the residents in terms of the balance of the town. So that could include, for example, working with the driving schools to vary the training routes that might be used.
Okay.
So it's not the same cars going through the same neighborhoods all the time.
All right, great. So I look forward to the PIC and this coming back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kerwin.
Yes, thank you, Jane. It's great to work together with you to resolve this. Just with the recommendations, there's a couple of things said in number two, perceived safety concerns raised by residents. And also, I'd like you to add the word "and councillors." They've raised this issue, too, and I'd like that to be included. But also, when we, when this report is passed by council on September the 12th, I think that's when we have our next council meeting, I would like to see this complete package circulated to the residents of the affected areas, which would include, of course, Hazelwood and Birchwood and Wildwood and, of course, Sparrow Road and the streets in Councillor Twinni's ward, Baronia, Waratah. Is there any other street, Jane, that you would like included?
No, just the ones that are, I guess-
They're highlighted? Okay. I would like to make sure that they know that council is addressing their concerns by, by this report, which will be after then September the 12th. And if you need any help to pass them out, I'd certainly do that. But everyone should be aware of what we're trying to do.
Councillor Kerwin, are you satisfied with the direction to staff, or do you want-
No, direction to staff.
Okay, thank you.
That's-
All right. I have Regional Councillor and then Councillor Heppen. Regional Councillor?
Thanks. The first question is just around, and I'm starting to hear some of the information, the details now, but so, but there's potential after PIC and process, but there's a potential to either work through partnership with the MTO or the, to direct the, the tester, the companies to move to different, like, what I'm thinking is, is that, you know, people have to get tested and licenses, and so this is a sort of a, you know, a nuisance that people, you know, that is part of society to a certain degree, but it'd be, I think it'd be a lot more palatable for residents if they knew, you know, six months or something, and then I'm done, and it's somebody else's turn, right? And I think if, if we're, are we looking at some, something like that, or?
Mr. Brower?
Yes, through Mr. Mayor, yes, we're looking at, at various options, and certainly some kind of scheduled or staggered structured kind of format for training and testing would be one of those options, for sure.
Yeah, because I think it would be one thing if, and when I read the report, I got the idea about maybe expanding the number of streets, but that would mean still having the same ones, but it'd be nice to actually rotate them in and out so that people don't have to. I can't answer your question, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's true.
I have information.
The, the difficulty, through Mr. Mayor, is that, of course, the testing routes are not entirely public, although I think probably the driving schools-
Schools seem to know.
Seem to know. And you are correct, the, through the MPP's office, they were able to request the MTO to add additional testing routes to that.
Okay. And so the question I'm bringing up for the PIC and beyond is whether we can look at actually rotating them, as opposed to just adding to them.
Yeah, and the extent to which we can control that is something we need to look at, for sure.
Yeah, but I guess it's with MTO, right, that would rotate, and the drive, the schools seem to follow the routes, so.
Yes, I'm not, what I need to clarify is whether or not it's a decision made by the, the local test office, or I do know essentially the MTO prescribes a certain criteria for testing itself. So of course, a student has to demonstrate a three-point turn and, you know, the typical kind of things that you would need to have to, to get your license. So the extent of the flexibility on the part of the local test school, testing office, I'm not sure about.
Okay, thank you. The other area I wanted to raise was that, obviously, from some of the information we're receiving, these are serving people from a wide area, not just Newmarket. And the report, logically, but often talks about things like encouraging spreading training routes throughout the municipality at varying times, and the word municipality is used a few times. I suspect, you know, the training, the, the training, the testing centre itself doesn't want to go too far afield for efficiency reasons, but we border two other municipalities, three other municipalities, very, very short distance from the centre. And it would be nice if, if we could also raise the issue at least a little bit with them about not just looking at moving their, their, their routes around in Newmarket, but consider that they have options that are relatively proximate in Aurora and East Quilumbury and possibly even Witcher Stove, but I suspect the type of route they need doesn't apply there. And, and I understand, they're going to, they're not going to want to go too far afield because they don't want their, their employees spending all their time driving back and forth, but there might be an opportunity to spread the impact a little beyond the borders of just Newmarket, as it's serving beyond the borders of Newmarket. So those would be the issues I would want to raise at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kerwin?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving me another opportunity. There are some dead-end streets. You know, the one that came off of Leslie, there's a, there's a road in there that could be used. There's a road at the end of, of, again, Leslie, just north of Mulock. It's a dead-end road. I know they're using it now for construction, but there are dead-end roads. One sort of, we're used one time, but then we did a cutoff and redesigned that area. So there are areas that no one uses where they could set up pylons that would be the same effect as cars parked on the road. So there are other areas that they can use that are appropriate for this type of thing to conduct their driving schools. And it would not affect the public, it wouldn't affect anyone in Newmarket. So I think they should have a look at that. With the old Imperial Gas Station used to be where you drove north on, on Leslie, and now you go straight up to, to Mulock. There's that cutoff there that's still there that you can use. Okay?
Okay. Other items for consideration? Thank you. Great. Okay, so I have the recommendations moved and seconded as amended, by adding the word "and councillors." And I'm taking that as a friendly amendment. Councillor Twinni, yes? Okay. Any further discussions? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, I think that covers all of our deputations. Councillor Heppen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the deputations are completed now, I was, I would hope, or I would ask that council consider pulling item number eleven. I missed pulling that item.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There was a present, yeah, there is a presentation for that. So, sorry if I, if I overlooked mentioning that. So, yeah, item number eleven is, does have a presentation as well. In fact, that's the next presentation we're going into.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we do now have a presentation with Kevin and the consultants regarding smart meters, and, and that relates to item number eleven in our, in our agenda, so. Now we permit up to ten minutes for presentations? Okay. It's back to school. Okay, Kevin, we permit up to ten minutes?
Thank you. So today, I'm talking about the smart water meter project. So just to get everyone briefed on knowing what we're talking about, is that we're, this is a project to move from our current meters to smart meters. And what these smart meters do is that they provide two-way remote communication so that we can read meters remotely. Right now, we need to go to every household in order to get reads on consumption. So we started this project, or we came to council with a project to get this started in 2015, and outlined a budget for the project, for six point seven million. And so I just want to first talk about even better operational optimization. This is pulled from council strategic priorities. And when we got this project started, we realized very quickly that this is a, we want to maximize the benefits and minimize the cost for this project. And we realized that we didn't have the expertise on hand, so we hired utilists to help us out with that. And they helped develop the business case for it. And so what they found was that the six point seven wasn't sufficient to get those goals that we needed. So there is a, the project went from six point seven million to ten million. And the cause for that, that difference is the consultant added an additional half million over the four years of the support of the project. Due to inflation, or due to the change in the relative price of the dollar, we're buying these meters from the states, and with the drop of the dollar, we saw some costs increase there. And also, there were some projects, or there were some aspects of the smart meter project that we weren't aware of that were cost. So that was another one point four million for that. So then we get to the benefits, and one of the major benefits of this project is meter accuracy. So right now, we have meters operating in the town that are old, and as meters age, they lose half of a percent of accuracy every year. So if you have a meter that's twenty years old, we're under-registering by about ten percent. So this provides a large benefit by switching out these meters. The second item here is meter reading in discnecks. Because they're smart meters, we no longer need to go household to households to measure consumption. We can do this all remotely, so that saves on labor costs for billing. The third item is something that we weren't aware of, but this, but utilists helped us out with figuring this out, is that with the smart meter infrastructure, we can install a fixed network that listens in on our distribution pipes. So what they do is that they, they listen for leaks, and they can help detect them. And then, once we know where they are, we can go and fix them. So this is like, it allows us to have permanent ears on our system to find the smallest leaks. And sometimes the small leaks are what really, really cost us for non-revenue water, because a small leak that goes unnoticed can leak for months and months and lose a lot of water. So this is a great opportunity for us to plug those holes and recoup those costs. And then the fourth item is avoided meter replacement. So that's just simply, we would have replaced these meters anyway, so, but we're doing it all at the front, so we don't need to do it later. So Newmarket Hydro recently switched to smart meters, and we're learning a lot from them. We're, they're sharing their experiences, they're share, and they're also sharing the vendors that they have. They have proven vendors that, that provide great service, and they can tell us, like, what, what, what the best deals are for moving forward on this project. So the financials of the project, the project will be, will be implemented over the next three years, so there's costs to that. And then it becomes revenue positive in the third year, and then it breaks even in the thirteenth year. And then, in the end, there's a seven million dollar benefit, net benefit for this project. And it provides an internal rate of return of five point eight percent, and that is remarkable for a project that's done for the town that has a payback period. So beyond the financial numbers, it also enables for better customer service. Now, this isn't directly, like, once we finish this project, then it will enable these customer service technologies. So the first is calendar billing by month. And right now, because it's all done by manual reads, sometimes you have a bill that goes from the first to the first, but, or it would be like from the seventh, the seventh of one month, or, or the sixteenth to the sixteenth. And that, from Newmarket Hydro, when they switch from month to month to month, of calendar month, customers really like that. They really like to be able to compare year over year, month to month. And also, once we have that in an online tool, then you will be able to compare, like, okay, this is how much I consume, consume a month. Now, let's see what all my neighbors consume, just the average, to kind of give you that social benchmarking of seeing where you stand. So that can provide really, really interesting information. And the second one is moving to a smart city and equipping customers with information. So the smart meters keep track of your water consumption throughout the month. So you could set a budget for, you want your household to spend eighty dollars a month on water. And the smart meter tracks your consumption, and then two weeks in, it finds out that you're consuming more than average, and it looks like you're going to go over your budget. So this smart meter technology will be able to give you a notification saying, hey, your family is likely going to go over. You can act on it accordingly. And also, it tells you the time of use. So if you have some kids that are taking way too long of showers or something like that, you can monitor that through the smart meter project. And also, it can detect leaks. So it's like having your own personal electronic plumber. So if there's a leak in your, in one of your fixtures, and usually it would go on for days or, or weeks that you wouldn't notice, and then once you get the bill, you get hit with a big fee, this is, this will allow us, allow the customers to know, oh, hey, there's a leak. You should probably go and check that out. And then the project timeline, so the RFP is scheduled to be issued in October, and the contract signing would be in July of twenty seventeen. We'll start installations in September, and then it'll take about three years to install all these meters, and that'll be complete in 2020. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Any questions, clarification? Councillor Heppen?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm glad to see that we're, we're doing this, and there's a real payback to the municipality and some financial benefit to, to our town in installing these. You spoke about it a little bit. So in order, if somebody doesn't set a budget for their home, for an example, and all of a sudden they're exceeding their budget, and we, I know probably all council members have received a call at some point in time where maybe somebody's toilet's running, or they have a leak in their home and it's unexpected, or sprinkler head that's running, and all of a sudden they have this massive new water bill because of these leaks. So I'm just wondering if, if somebody does have a leak and they don't sign up for this budget process, budget analysis, and being notified, will they, i- if somebody has a greater, or all of a sudden a spike in their consumption over, say, a day or a two or a three-day period, can you just let us know- period, can you just let us know after how many days or how many weeks somebody would be notified of this, this spike in consumption?
So, like, it can, it can track consumption over, like, usually, it'd be, like, depending on what the, the consumption spike is, there's just different rules that you would set it for the computer to figure out what your consumption level is. But like, usually, it's at night, when there's a consistent consumption hour by hour, then you can say, okay, that, that's a leak. That's not somebody going to the toilet all the time, or something like that. It's just, then it can, it's usually within a day. Oh, yeah, you can.
Sorry. So from the standpoint of the technology.
Maybe before you speak, just to let everybody know who you are.
Hi, James Douglas, consultant from Utilities.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So from the technology standpoint, the information's being recorded, transmitting back to the town multiple times throughout the day. Those thresholds can be set so that if it's a leak and the customer doesn't know about it, that it would notify town staff, so they can send out a letter to consumer, to let them know that you'd have a potential leak within your home. And then, on the abnormal consumption habits, same approach. So main thing is get the information back. If the customer subscribed, excellent. But if not, then at least it gives the information to town staff so they can notify the public that there's something you should act on.
Thank you. So if somebody who doesn't sign up, for an example, the town doesn't, for example, have their email address, would we, as a town, be calling the people, reaching out to them and saying, look, we noticed your consumption, maybe things have changed in your world? Like, how are we going to notify the, the resident as soon as possible?
Can you add Kevin to that, Kevin? Oh, sorry.
I'll, and the director of financial services to, to answer that one.
Okay, Mr. Mays.
I wanted to clarify, because I want to make sure we're not going off the track here. When we're looking at this project, is there's two phases to it. The first phase that we're talking about here is setting the foundation. It is replacing the meters we currently have with smart meters. It is putting the, the basics in that will allow us to develop in the future. It is not, it, we have to do this phase to do that, which you're talking of now, about informing customers and all that. We will not be at the point to be able to do that at the end of these three years. That is another project. That is something that will have to be built upon this. We will still be pigging backing at that point upon Hydro's customer service and on their billing and so on and so forth. That is something we will subsequently be coming back with to take advantage of those opportunities. So what we're looking at here, just to clarify, is setting the foundation. It has the potential to allow us to do those, do those things in the future. So it's not a matter of signing up or not signing up. We will have plenty of time to figure out how we're going to contact people and all that. This is just to replace the meters we have now and be ready for the future.
Okay, thank you. I know you're well aware, we've dealt with people together and spoke with people and explained, you know, spikes in their consumption, which were significant, and people have asked for a payment plan to, to cover those. So I'm glad we're going to be looking at that. I have to ask the question of how we went from, we've got a bit of an explanation, I'm sorry to ask this, but how we went from $6.7 million to $10 million. I know from last year in February 2015, you know, we've seen a bit of an increase in currency difference between us and the US, but not at 50%. So if we can just get an explanation, what happened, how it happened.
Mr. Mays, here?
Yes, again, to, to Mr. Mayor. The original estimate we used was back in 2015 and actually predated that a bit. We looked at the experience that Barry had gone through. And we based our original projections on that. This was not based upon an extensive study of our needs. So there's been three factors since then. If we, also, if we flip back to 2015, 2014, we were looking at a US dollar, which basically was on par with the Canadian dollar. And now, there's been a 30% increase. The, the technology we're talking about, buying the, the smart meters, all are of American manufacturer. So we've had that. Also, we had the foresight at that time to bring in consultation, the higher consultant, as you've met. And we found that there's a little more to this project than we originally had. So as we scoped out the project, we both saw some other expenses that there would be, but also some other opportunities, like, for instance, Kevin explained that within the distribution system, we can set up some monitoring, which will then also have the, the possibility of detecting leaks. I think that was, I don't know how many, anyway, so, so those are many things. But here's, here's the most important thing. When we were originally looking at this project, we knew it would be financed through the savings and the additional revenues that were brought in. And we estimated that would be within, somewhere within the 10 to 20-year range. And we still are seeing that, because although the costs have gone up, there are also more substantial savings involved, savings and revenues. So that we're looking at a payback period of approximately 13 years. So this, this, financially, if nothing else, I think this project proves itself viable.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I, that was one of the first comments I made. I agree, and I'm, I'm happy that we're taking advantage of this financial benefit. Recently reported in our local newspaper, there was the mention of a $3 million over budget. And I'm hoping that we can maybe, myself, if you could send me an explanation, so that when residents, and they have been asking what's happened, is how we can explain that to them. So thank you.
So summary of the changes to be available, perhaps, to all members of council, as far as the communication program? That would be helpful. Thank you. Regional counselor?
Thanks very much. Thanks for the presentation. Like Counselor Hampton, I think this is excellent that we're looking at this and going in this direction. It, it puts me in mind of the solar panel installations that we've done and the LED light conversions that we've done, and the, the way that we've managed to take a long-term view, as opposed to a short-term view, but a long-term view of our infrastructure assets and make them more efficient and, and create cost savings. Cost savings that are maybe down the road, but you have to, you have to be willing to plan that far out to reap the rewards. And I think we're doing that. The increase in costs, I think, is really, I, my view of it is, and I think it's a fair description, is that what we're looking at here is just getting more accurate numbers as, as we understand the project more fully. And I, I think this is what it would have cost regardless. We just are much more aware of all the aspects of the cost that would have come to fruition regardless. And that gives us, I think, greater ability to project financially in the future. So I, I do have some questions more about just understanding how the financial aspect works. It's a five-point-something internal rate of return, 13 years till pays itself back and et cetera, seven, seven or eight million to the, to the good over the lifetime of the project. What, how does, how does that, how does that work compared to, let's say, the, the LED light installation? We'll, we'll be lending ourselves the money and repaying ourselves the money starting at the end of the three years. And we'll be repaying ourselves the money at that five-point, that five-plus percent, i.e., there's a delta between what we would have gotten currently, which is with interest rates being so low with our own money, what we would have gotten invested in traditional forms compared to what this can pay back plus? And is that five-point internal rate of return, is that the rate of return we're getting on our money plus the $7 million? Or does that represent the $7 million over the lifetime of the project?
Mr. Mays?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a lot of questions.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll start with the loan. We would be borrowing the money, I believe the report references, or there's a reference to the water and wastewater asset replacement fund. This is in compliance with our investment strategy, where we see if a project is going to be able to self-finance it and, and have a return, that we borrow from own reserves. We would then charge internally a rate, I'm trying to think what it actually says in the policy, it'd be competitive rate, so I believe it says at prime. So we would charge ourselves a prime or prime plus, but not the 5.88. The 5.8% rate of return is the $7 million. So not only are we covering all our expenses, we're getting additional monies as well. Now, we, we would then have, be able to establish strategies as to whether we want to amortize things differently. We could have the first 13 years just be recouping the costs, the last seven years, we reap the benefits, or we could spread it over the 20 years. We can look at strategies on how we want to do that. And that's similar to what we've done for the solar panels, for instance, which I believe had somewhere in a 10 to 15-year rate of return, 20-year lifespan. 20 years, by the way, is not just an arbitrary number. The 20 years is based upon the life cycle of the asset. So in this case of solar panels, we had a 20-year life cycle. We amortized the benefits over the 20 years. The streetlights, the LED, similar type philosophy, where we've tried to, rather than reap all the costs now, and, sorry, pay all the costs now, reap the benefits later, we've amortized it such that we get some of the benefits as we go along. But it's very similar, very similar setup to what we've done for those things.
Okay, so we're, and, and you're saying we'll chart, we'll lend ourselves the money at prime, you believe is the policy? And then, on top of, and the prime's not included in the $7 million, right? The prime is just repaying ourselves plus interest, so we're whole on that money? And then, there's the $7 million we will still realize?
As I say, I can't remember if it's prime or it's prime plus, but it's, it's within the policy. So we would be borrowing the $10 million for the capital program from the reserves, and we'd be paying it back. The, the idea for that is to make sure that we reserve, we maintain our reserve funds whole, so that they would have been receiving that sort of rate of return on our investments. It's based upon our benchmark mark. So it would be, it would be in that neighborhood. So we're paying ourselves as if we were getting the investments we otherwise would get. So there's no harm done to our reserves that we've been using for this. It's, it's a, so they're getting the rate they would have got, we're paying, the investment is being made at an interest rate below what we would have got commercially. So it's a bit of a win-win situation.
Okay, last question I have, to Mr. Mayor, is for our consultant and that's, or, or staff, but it's really around, I guess, the, I think the due diligence question should I need to ask in relation to this, is when we look at the benefits, I think it's probably more the area, where's the, if you had to describe to your client, where's the greatest area of risks? What area, what area, is there, or are these very conservative numbers? So I'm just trying to, trying to look at this and go, okay, so, is there any weak points in the model, or any, not weak points, but in areas where we'd be watching more closely to see if they realize the kind of projections they want? Or are these numbers fairly conservative and you feel quite confident about them?
Yeah, it's always with the water project, it comes back to what you discover at the home. So it's going to be, we're having policies and procedures in place to, if you discover assets that need to be repaired, what do we take on? Where's the demarcation point with the customer's assets and so forth? Water meters that are built over, over time with, you know, basement repair work and so forth. There's a lot of appointment management costs on water projects that, finding the right partners, having the right policies set up in advance of the project to identify, to control some of those cost overruns.
And so you're talking right now in particular, in relation to the installation?
Installation is the biggest risk area.
It is.
The other, a lot of ones are the, they're known from the standpoint of contract certainty around the price of the assets, contract certainty around the ongoing O and M around infrastructure. But it's the, the biggest unknown is going to be your installation. And so it's making sure that the RFP mitigates those risks, but then also, there's policies in place that your installation partner can point to, to make sure that not all the costs, if it's not the fault of the town, is borne by the town.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Twain?
The, talking about the 20-year outlook of, that's sort of like the scope of the project is, so the equipment that would be in place would only, in 20 years, would have to be all replaced at that point again? Or, you know, I mean, when you think about, you know, some of the water meters that are out there now, there, there's some out there that are pretty old, that have been out, been, you know, and put in place in some of the homes from day one. So this equipment has only got a 20-year lifespan, and then we would have to expect to replace them all again and, and cure, would it again be in curing these costs the same? Would it be, the project be the same again at that point?
So standard practice is, would be to perform a business case analysis to assess the asset in around year 15, 16, figure out what your, how the technology you purchased, where it still stands. Because we're talking communication technology, so 15 years from now, where are communications going to go? Where are the opportunities for the town? So traditionally, what we recommend to a community is to, in year 15, do an assessment, understand where you're at, figure out where the market strategy is and where the market opportunities do, create that business case. And if the outcome of the business case is maintain and utilize existing infrastructure ongoing, because there's, there's a proven, we're not losing accuracy in the meters, and the communications will satisfy our needs, excellent. But if it doesn't, then you have to do a replacement strategy. But it's a decision to be looked at 15 years from now.
So basically, sort of almost at that break-even point, you're going to be starting to look perhaps?
Yeah, start looking, because it comes back to that planning exercise, to, to look at, to say, I don't want to be finding out in year 20 that I got to do the forklift and replace everything.
Sure.
It's how do we plan better so for future investment strategies, what does that look like for the town?
Right, and it could possibly be that, that it's working fine and, and we can continue on, and we don't have to replace it.
Correct.
And I'm sure, I guess we've already determined that there's no sourcing of this equipment here in Canada, that we have to go to the, to the United States.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kerwin?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Kevin and the gentleman for your presentation. And Kevin took the initiative of attending the Georgian Bay Water Conference this spring up in Huntsville. And he's well-informed on this project, and you've taken the initiative, Kevin, and I compliment you as part of our staff in doing this. You've done an excellent job, but you took the time. And Mike May sent you up there, and it was a very informative two days. And we talked about smart meters, and it's not something new. There, there are great Canadian companies who can install the smart meters once we purchase them from the Americans. But once that happens, we've got great companies who can do the job, and they've done it in other municipalities. So thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you. My own observations is that, you know, all too often, we hear about people making long-term decisions, and that's beyond four years. And it looks like the break-even point is around 2029. And I think at that time, I'm likely to be on pension with a fixed income, and I'll certainly appreciate that we've made the right decision here. So this is a huge undertaking, and I think it, it makes good business sense to do it. And, and it also looks at water conservation, because we'll be able to detect leaks. And there'd be no surprises for our customers once we get to the, the stage where we want to be at. So it's a significant undertaking. Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to hearing the discussion on the report that recommends us going forward. So I'll entertain a motion then to receive the deputation. Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Hampton, all those in favor? And that is carried. Let's bring forward item number 11 now, then. We have the recommendations. Counselor Kerwin, seconded by Counselor Hampton. Okay. Speaking as the mover, Counselor Kerwin?
I'm going to adjourn the presentation and discuss it. Been for three or four years. Great to move forward.
Thank you. Counselor Hampton?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am looking forward to having the ability to speak with residents as, if they have spikes in their, their cost from water use, and they're unaware of. So I'm looking forward to that happening in the future. And I, I'm thankful that we're, we have this in front of us, and we have some cost-saving measures for residents coming forward.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Now, our next presentation is with respect to item number six, park dedication bylaw. So if I could ask staff to come forward with their presentation? Okay. If you can introduce Mr. Palmer, then?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, today's presentation will provide an update on the parkland dedication bylaw and what has happened since the last presentation on June 20th. This is one of the first deliverables of the marketing the corridors initiative. The June 20th presentation provided a lot of detailed information on parkland calculation rates, types of acceptable parkland, and a financial analysis. And as directed by council, the draft bylaw undertook a public consultation over the month of July. The bylaw before you today is a modified version of the previous version, updated to reflect the feedback that was received over the summer, over the month of July. And the report outlines the changes that were made to the bylaw based on the comments received. We've been working closely with Ron Palmer of the Planning Partnership in preparation of this bylaw, driving, drawing from his experience crafting parkland strategies for other urbanizing municipalities across the GTA. So at this point, I'm going to hand things over to, to Mr. Palmer to elaborate on the types of parkland permitted by the proposed bylaw, and why accepting these forms of parkland is important for municipalities looking to intensify it.
Mr. Mayor, and members of council, it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm going to hit some of the higher-level items in terms of what is an urban park system? Uh, I'm going to hit, uh, some of the, um, higher level items in terms of what is an urban park system, why it's different and, uh, some of the reasoning behind why we're proposing, uh, different parkland dedication requirements than is permitted under the Planning Act. And I apologize, I have a bit of a sore throat, so I hope I can get through this without coughing too much. What is an urban park system? An urban park system is a different kind of park system that doesn't focus too much on, uh, the provision of soccer fields and baseball diamonds and larger, thank you, larger green spaces, but rather focuses on, on harder surfaced, uh, spaces that are flexible in use, uh, and are quite complex in terms of their design and programming opportunities. In this bylaw, we talk about urban neighborhood parks, which are the largest element of this system. The scale drops down into an urban square or plaza. As we move into smaller spaces, we talk, call them pocket parks. Then there are other spaces that enhance connectivity or enhance the sidewalk space in front of buildings. We call those sliver spaces or pedestrian mews. Is it this button? What we find are that, uh, in a, in a robust diverse urban area, like you are trying to achieve in your intensification areas through your urban center secondary plan, you need a whole array of different scaled parks, different types of park spaces. Mostly they are connected to the pedestrian sidewalk system and are considered as enhancements of those, of that system. They're complicated. They can include fully public parks, uh, in a traditional sense. They can, they can be semi-public, they can be privately owned, publicly accessible spaces. Uh, experience tells us that in an urban context, these spaces are extremely highly used. There are a number of groups that use these spaces, residents, employees and tourists, and they require a higher level of design, uh, higher construction costs and maintenance protocols that are specific to this type of space. As an example, um, I sit on the Blure Yorkville BIA and we, in addition to the city's requirements for maintenance, we empty the garbage cans in Yorkville Park three times a day on the weekend, not once a week. So it's a different kind of park system that has different needs. Certainly the integration with the, the rest of the pedestrian realm, the sidewalks, the streetscapes and so on, is a fundamental element of an urban park system. Uh, moving into the details of a parkland dedication regime, we look at what the Planning Act, uh, and the recently, uh, updated Planning Act through Bill 73 provides the municipality with the opportunity to do. The baseline requirements for parkland dedication are 2% of the total land area for non-residential uses and 5% of the total land area for residential uses. In an urban context, that is far too little. Uh, it doesn't generate either the income or the land areas that are necessary for a robust urban park system. Moving to the second level, in terms of land generation, the Planning Act does give the municipality the opportunity to, uh, request on the residential side, one hectare of land for every 300 dwelling units. This generates a tremendous amount of land. My, uh, experience in other municipalities with testing this parkland dedication is that you can be up to three to four times the total site area in your parkland dedication, which is a huge cost to the development industry and certainly goes far beyond what you would anticipate as a necessary parkland system, uh, within your municipality. So we look at that as a land dedication as far too high. The recent change to the Planning Act through Bill 73 said, "We agree that the one hectare per 300 dwelling units is far too high for the calculation of cash in lieu of parkland. So we'll give you an alternative that says for cash in lieu purposes, you can generate one hectare, the value of one hectare of land for every 500 dwelling units." Again, the research shows that in more urban development prototypes, again, you're generating between one and two times the value of the development site itself in terms of cash in lieu. This is a tremendous disincentive to development, uh, in locations where you're trying to achieve higher density forms of development. So again, we consider this to be far too high, uh, in terms of application here in Newmarket. Um, over the last few years, I've had the, the, the benefit of doing some work for some of your neighbors on exactly this issue. Uh, and some of that work has been a canvassing of all municipalities in the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And the key conclusion is that there is no consistently applied approach to parkland dedication with, within the intensification areas, urban growth centers and your own urban center secondary plan areas. There is however, a very consistent concern that what the Planning Act provides for is considered an extreme disincentive by the development industry to the achievement of the higher density forms of development that are actually desirable. So many of those municipalities, just like Newmarket, are exploring alternative rates for parkland dedication or cash in lieu that will deliver both an appropriate urban parkland system and will facilitate the desired higher density forms of development. One of the interesting things that has happened, uh, two years ago was that the town of Richmond Hill ended up at an Ontario municipal board trying to defend the use of a per-unit rate that was based somewhat on the one hectare per 300 dwelling unit rate. The board determined that that rate was not appropriately justified and imposed on the town of Richmond Hill, a 25% cap, uh, in the urban intensification areas for either the dedication of land or the receipt of cash in lieu. That OMB decision is currently under appeal at divisional court. And the municipalities and the development industry are both anxiously await the outcome of that appeal. In canvassing other municipalities, uh, the city of Toronto utilizes a variable cap system. They use 10% of the total lot area for development on lots under one hectare. They use 15% uh, if the lot is one hectare to five hectares and 25% of the lots over five hectares. Obviously in Toronto, the vast majority of development is happening on sites under one hectare in size. So typically the city of Toronto is imposing 10% of parkland dedication or cash in lieu. In most circumstances, they accept the cash in lieu. Vaughan currently uses $4,000 a dwelling unit. And again, they're currently in a process reviewing that number and attempting to determine whether they need variable per-unit costs or whether the cost per unit is in fact an appropriate approach to, to parkland dedication cash in lieu. Markham, uh, utilizes an overall, uh, requirement for 1.2 hectares per thousand people town, citywide. Uh, but, uh, work that I'm currently doing for the city of Markham uh, is exploring other approaches, including a graduated approach where the parkland dedication cash in lieu, uh, is reduced as the building gets denser or taller. They're also looking at an approach that varies the land value assumption uh, to take advantage of the differential of urban land value versus suburban land value versus rural land value. Interestingly, the work so far indicates that they're, they generate almost the same, uh, parkland or cash in lieu with a few minor, uh, differences. Again, they haven't come on, uh, made a determination yet as to which approach they would use, but they're certainly reviewing it in a, in a fair bit of detail as to what they should do going forward. Mississauga, another municipality where I've recently done work on their designated urban center, they use 1.2 hectares per thousand people, but they negotiate down the parkland dedication or cash in lieu on a site-by-site basis, uh, with all the inherent, uh, complications and time that that takes. The numbers that, uh, we've been using in the Newmarket bylaw are variable. We look at, first of all, the 0.7 hectares of land per thousand people. That number comes from your urban center secondary plan and that number, uh, is intended to, uh, represent an appropriate overall number for your urban center secondary plan areas. We've also incorporated a 25% cap. That comes from the OMB hearing in Richmond Hill. Uh, your neighbor to the south will be utilizing that number for the time being until another number is used. We also looked at, as I said, the city of Toronto and they have a cap of 25% on larger sites. And interestingly, some of the research I've done in master-planned new urban centers, uh, 25% is about the maximum that they plan for in a new, uh, urban center context. Certainly there are some urban centers that have less than that, but the assumption there is that other elements of the park, urban parkland system will be added to that as development occurs over time. To give you two good examples, the Vaughan Metropolitan Centre achieves and is planned for about 25% of the total land area in public parkland, whereas the Langstaff Centre, that is partly in Richmond Hill and partly in the city of Markham, achieves about 15% of the total land area with the anticipation that there would be additional urban park spaces included on a per-development basis. The goal here and the principle that we've been working with here in Newmarket is that that 25% cap is an interim number that is intended specifically to promote development in your urban intensification areas and that after momentum, development momentum begins and is sustained, that council could again consider the removal of that cap and simply go to, back to the 0.7 hectares per thousand people that is in your secondary plan. We think that this approach is appropriate for the Newmarket Urban Center Secondary Plan areas, your intensification areas, primarily because we know that the Planning Act alternative requirements are not financially viable and will not result in the forms of urban development that you are anticipating. That was work done by, uh, Nberry Lyons Company that suggested that those, that level of parkland dedication or cash in lieu is simply too high uh, and would not be attractive for the development industry to come here and build what you want. We think that the approach where you establish a cap, uh, with a longer-term objective is a fair and equitable application that would apply throughout for all forms of development within your urban center secondary plan areas, um, without the need to negotiate on a site-by-site basis. The most important principle that we feel we've achieved in this, uh, parkland dedication bylaw is that it, it's either, you can consider it either an incentive or a lack of a disincentive to the private sector to build those forms of urban development that you are desiring and that you are anticipating in your urban center secondary plan. We also believe that it will produce, over time, a diverse, flexible and appropriate urban park system in those areas where it is necessary. And that's my presentation for you today. Happy to answer any questions you can.
Thank you. Questions, regional councillor?
Very much, uh, interesting presentation. Um, some great, uh, great, great comparatives, uh, as well there. I'm just curious, it's, you've stated and I think the report states that over time the cap could be removed and it could be monitored, I think it was the staff's suggestion, is to revisit it in three years. But the cap is also pointed out here as coming from an OMB ruling. Help me understand how everybody seems to be going to this cap rate because that's what the OMB ruling said, but yet we could consider removing it. Is it not a?
The cap only applies to Richmond Hill. And, um, part of the decision in, in the Richmond Hill OMB decision is that you need to do a study to justify a number. Richmond Hill did not have that work done. So the cap, in my mind, is a temporary solution pending Richmond Hill's, uh, study.
So, just for the sake of argument, are we not, though subtly, as others seem to be reinforcing the sense that that speaks to more than Richmond Hill by everybody adopting it?
Uh, not everyone is adopting it. Uh, certainly the city of Markham is not considering a 25% cap in their intensification areas. They're looking for other approaches that, um, are fair and equitable, that will not be a disincentive to development. Their context is, is a bit different than Newmarket. So what's being proposed in Markham will not be the same as here in Newmarket.
Are there other jurisdictions that are somewhat comparable to Newmarket that are taking a different approach that you're aware of?
I am not aware of anyone else looking at the 25% cap, um, other than that Richmond Hill is looking at it very carefully.
Right.
The city of Toronto, as I mentioned, uses that, uh, on large sites. But certainly their cap is much lower as the size of the site is reduced.
Is it, and this might go to our staff as well, to legal even possibly, but is there, is it possible or are there legal reasons or other reasons? Would it be possible to create a rate or to say, we're going to give this favorable 25% cap rate, uh, assuming that the, this, the decision has not been appealed to the OMB? In other words, use it as a, you know, we're always, we're often frustrated by, uh, lack of control we may have or may not have and vis a vis the OMB. Could we use this as an incentive for people to come to some sort of agreement with us on what is appropriate built form for a given site as opposed to going to the OMB?
That seems like a very simple question, but it's a very complex one. I can't anticipate the motivations of the development industry, although through this process, we did have conversation with Build and they were, uh, extremely comfortable with the approach that is being taken in this bylaw. So what that means to me is that at least from a parkland dedication cash in lieu perspective, that this would not be a disincentive. However, um, when you look at a development application in its broadest context, parkland dedication is only one small element of what they consider and particularly it's only one small element of what they consider from a financial perspective. Obviously, section 37 of the Planning Act comes into play. Development charges come into play, parking standards come into play and cash in lieu of parking comes into play, notwithstanding all the other things related to land value and construction costs. So it would be hard to, to give you a definitive answer that this would be the, the magic silver bullet that removes, um, concern or OMB appeals related to development applications. Certainly however, I think it takes one of them off the table.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting to be a magic bullet, magic bullet, but if they were pursuing it that heartily, um, that they weren't, that they preferred the OMB option over the 25% cash in lieu, then it's probably not an incentive. So I guess I'd be, I don't, is there, is there any, I got through, through, uh, through Mr. Mayor, maybe to, to our commissioner, is there? maybe to our commissioner, is there any sense that there's a legal impediment to applying a rate or putting, I think the report even touched on this topic somewhere, didn't it?
Ms. Armcham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, could you just repeat that question?
So, so the question really is, is, is there a possibility of, it seems to me that the 25% cap is not that common, and we're viewing it as an incentive to development on the corridors, but is it possible to, to state that that is only available to proponents who do not appeal or, or, you know, who come to an approved application without, without availing themselves with the OMB?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think it's possible to put in the condition not to appeal. It's a statutory right to appeal, but we expect to have a decision fairly soon. I understand that the divisional court heard this matter last week, so that decision may be out fairly soon before we need to have a further discussion about whether it applies or how it applies or when it may apply.
The divisional court ruling vis-à-vis Richmond Hill?
That's correct.
But that might not necessarily give us insight into whether, and I understand you can't make a condition that you can't go to the OMB, so we're not saying that. We're just saying, if you do, you're, you're not, you still get to do your project, but the parkland rate is what it traditionally is in many other municipalities. You're no longer eligible because, you know, if no other reason, you've incurred costs of municipality that we would have otherwise been positioned to give you vis-à-vis this cap.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, the rate is the rate, and there are no conditions attached as to whether you get a better rate because you decide not to exercise your appeal rights. I've never heard of such a condition.
Sounds like Mississauga negotiates them all, so...
No, I haven't, I, I, I don't think that that kind of condition would be enforceably, enforceable.
Is it something we can look into more somehow, or like try to understand if the option is there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, if I could speak to that for a moment. I, I think a lot of it has to do with creating, as Ron pointed out, a fair and equitable, but also in, in terms of this discussion, a predictable process. So if you introduce too many other elements to it, in this, in this sense, it's this path, and in this sense, it's this path, then sometimes it can work against the simplicity of the system, which could be its strongest benefit.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it sounds to me like, I mean, Mississauga obviously isn't the desirable model, but even Markham is working on one that's going to have definitely different avenues, or that's what I'm hearing. Like, is that correct, that there'll be different paths forward?
Not, not different avenues. They would be enshrined in the bylaw. So if you wanted to build a 32-story building at 10 FSI, there would be a formula.
Right.
If you wanted to build an 18-story building at 6 FSI, there'd be a different formula.
Right.
So the formulas are enshrined, so it's not a negotiated formula.
No. And this isn't meant to be negotiated, meant to be, the idea I'm proposing would be enshrined, and it would be only two avenues, OMB, no OMB. That sounds like there's several possible, so...
Well, I think, I think it would be fair to say that you could take an avenue where you wanted to use an alternative parkland dedication as a negotiating tool. I don't think that there is anything wrong with doing that. However, negotiating, you would start then with the Planning Act and say, we're going to use, on the basis of calculating land, one hectare per 300 dwelling units, and one hectare for 500 for cash in lieu. And if you don't go to the OMB, we'll give you something else. I don't know how effective that would be, other than you would spend a lot of time negotiating because parkland dedication would be one of the elements that you would be negotiating.
It just seems to me that, you know, we're giving up some revenue to do this. The OMB costs us money. There's actually a justifiable rationale for saying, you know, the available money we had to try to support, you're using it by taking us to the OMB, but I guess I'll leave that for now. The, the last question I had is really is the rate of 25%. So that's, there's not a sense that we have to be at that because the OMB. We're just using that because it's, there's a benchmark out there right now.
Correct.
Okay. The...
No, sorry?
Sorry, and the, and the...
That would be my opinion.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, the, you looked at the, the average lot sizes across urban centers, and because they are large, rather than sort of the small lot sizes that you find in downtown Toronto, the 25% makes sense in our, in our context.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Sheldon?
Mr. Mayor, if council does wish for us to take a little bit more, a little bit of additional effort to take a look at whether there are some options, but the one thing that I did want to say is that through the discussions that we're having with property owners and with experts like Barry Lyon, there seem to be a couple of significant challenges to get the development industry to start building condominiums on our corridors. And one is in the area of park contributions, the other is in the area of parking. And what we've done, the parking requirements, what we've done in terms of the comprehensive zoning bylaw process that's moving forward, we've put an early deliverable in that consultant's assignment to take a look at, on more of a macro scale, what a parking justification study might look like to, to have a better handle on that, and that can act as an incentive. And in the parks area, we can pick a number, whatever it is, but on the, the thought of lost revenue, you only really lose revenue or lose a park contribution if you see development. If you don't see development, you're not going to lose anything. So there's a little bit of risk here, but that, that is why staff have come forward with a number that seems to be acceptable to build and is for a limited time period. It is to act as an incentive with the monitoring process. So we're trying that two-pronged approach to sort of aim for the, two of the key areas to incent development. The third one is on processes as well, to have a, as refined a process as possible that protects a municipality's interests but moves the development through the, the process. So there is a bit of risk in whatever way you go, but this is more tied to incenting that initial growth, get the glass ceiling, so to speak, broken, and then you can look at changing the, the bylaw.
Yeah, I'll try to finish up now. I know there's other speakers, but I guess my, my thinking on it is just that there's, and I agree, if they didn't build it, then you didn't lose revenue, but you just, there's no way to ever, there's no crystal ball that tells you that, oh, they would have built or wouldn't have built because of this or that. And so you, you wonder and look back and go, and you know, you want to incentivize, you want to move things forward, but you don't want to leave money on the table, so to speak. And, and given that we will have some significant, I think, parkland costs in the future, you want to make sure we're as capitalized as possible for that. And so the one thing I would say is that, and I've kind of said this all along, I would like to see us do something that puts, we've, and, and, and Mr. Sheldon, you've heard this, and we've been in several meetings, and you're referring to those meetings, what we've been hearing is from a number of people is that there's a sense that the first major condo build that moves forward will possibly, and it's been said by a few people we've met with, will possibly create others to, to move as well. And the market might get tested and proved, and away you go. And I really would, I've always wanted to see something that puts some sort of shorter term, at three years with the, the idea that we'll review. I know three years in development world is not that long, but it's, and so I wonder what, I'm going to ask the consultant what your thought would be about saying something. What that says is we'll review it, and maybe we'll just keep going, and it doesn't really put, I'd like to put some pressure to people that are on the fence to say, you know what? If you're thinking about it, there's some money to be saved right now, but maybe not a year or two from now. And so I wonder what it would look like if we said, you know, 25% cap for 18 months or something, and then it will go to 30%, or it will go to 50%. But something that really says to somebody, the opportunity is now. What's your thoughts on that, I guess?
That's also very interesting, and it certainly would light a fire if there was, if it appeared that there was a significant financial incentive to be sooner rather than later. And that is something I think you could do. In the bylaw, it's a municipal bylaw, and you, council can change it at any time, but I think what you're saying is put them on notice.
Right.
And say, this regime is going to be in place for 18 months, and then we are going to change it. You could do that anytime, but how do you, how do you give them notice in the bylaw that it's going to change?
And that's why my thinking is if you do it now, that's what creates incentive. If you say, well, we have the option to do it at some point, it doesn't quite light that fire, right? So, I mean, I'll leave it, there's other speakers, but I, I'm really interested in the idea of putting a, a, a time on this, whether it's two or even the full three years, but at that point, say, but, that's what's going to happen. Now, as you said, we can change your mind at that point, but we can change it.
It's a more definitive...
We can go back from the 50% and say, no, we want to keep it, but...
A more definitive statement of an end.
Right.
Thank you. If we're looking at intensification, I wonder if a three-year project cycle is, is a reasonable one. Like, would an 18-month project cycle be too short for someone? Because they want it, I'd say that the business case would need to be firm before anybody goes into the ground, digs into the ground, so they'd, they'd want to know that that's protected. But that's, I think that's all, that's administrative in terms of how we would capture that. I do have other speakers, councillor Bazanz, and then councillor Hampton, and then councillor Kerwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks very much for the presentation. Actually, my questions were also around the, the three-year timeframe and, and the mechanism by which there would be that safety valve, because, you know, it is a long period of time to, or rather, a short period of time for a lot of activity to take place. And I know that in the bylaw itself, that, you know, it said that, that it would take effect the, the day before, the day of the permit being issued or whatever, but to get to that point, you could chew up a lot of, of the three-year timeframe, and then, you know, we may have other decisions made and so forth. And I think there's also sort of a sense sometimes that if you have a bylaw, it should be enshrined for that period of three years and not changed in, in that time. So my question was around, you know, what might some of the mechanisms or rationale be for us to look at, at making changes to the bylaw within the three-year time period? Would that be because we weren't getting the uptake, that, you know, we didn't have the early bird special that people, you know, jumped in to take advantage of? And what might be some of the, the reasons and rationale that we might expect within a three-year time period that could then require us to, you know, pull the trigger on this safety mechanism to, to make a change and, and have that happen?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and councillor Bazanz. For example, if we, if we see, and I think Mayor Van Bynan raised this at the last, in June, if we see a lot of development applications come over the counter and they're citing this as the main reason, then that would be, you know, say there's too many applications for us to process all at once, and we find ourselves RFPing to, to planning consultants to help with the processing, then that would be an instance where we would say, okay, let's take a step back and actually look at this. Is, is this too much of a discount? Are we, are we selling the farm, so to speak? If we are, then we should rein that in a little bit, but, and the bylaw allows for that. It's, it's open, we can look at it at any time. At the same time, the three years does allow a good time period for other initiatives that we're looking at, like the parking reduction, to come on stream. So if we do something for, say, 18 months, then that may not come into, into play at a time when, when this is already, you know, you want to find that sweet spot where all these, all these initiatives are overlapping, and I don't know if the 18 months will allow it.
Thank you. Councillor Hampton?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to our CAO, we're seeing that we're going to potentially have a lot of purpose-built rental coming to town. We have some that are underway and being developed right now, and, and more coming down the line. And from what I'm hearing from folks in town, that they would like to, you know, potentially eventually sell their home, and they'd like to not just move into something that's purpose-built rental, but like to have some ownership, and would like to have a condominium in some, someplace where they can live. And we know that Newmarket needs that, and we're not seeing that at the moment. So my question is, by reducing our parking standards and our requirements along the corridors and what is being proposed today, do you feel that's, you're having the discussions with these developers along the corridors or potential developers and landowners, is that enough of a tipping point to kind of incentivize this type of growth that, what I believe we need?
Mr. Sheldon?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What we, I guess in our discussions, we started to recognize that we are seeing a number of rental proposals, and we have been querying the development industry about condominiums for the very reason that you've indicated there. And on the parking component of it, I will say that on the corridors, you do have high order transit. So it's a, you know, it's a place that would benefit from having that in terms of looking at what the needs are, and it's something that you can always change. But we are hearing that these are the type of incentives that we need. The discussions, we're hearing, there's a certain level that is required in terms of purchase price for a condominium that would move a developer forward to, to build them. And we're starting to hear that, you know, there may be, that that may be starting to become doable this far north, if you like, in Toronto, and you have people out there doing market reviews to, to see what the market looks like in that regard. So we are getting some indicators that there could be some movement, but those developers are hearing in our presentation that we are looking at parking. We do have this park bylaw before council with some, you know, nothing confirmed at this point in time, but, you know, the hope is that that will move it forward. They're looking for other incentives as well, and as the regional councillor was saying, you want to have that balance where, you know, you're just doing enough to incent that growth and not too much. So, I mean, these are the two areas, parking and parks, that have been highlighted for us.
Thank you. I know that yourself and the mayor and the regional councillor have been meeting with property owners along the corridors and having those discussions and seeing where they stand and what, what their horizons are for redeveloping these properties. I'm, I'm looking forward, and I hope that all of council can be informed as to, as our CAO that, and you're the person who's really working the, the front lines of working with the potential developers, that that can be shared with all of council members as to what you believe will incentivize this type of growth to our municipalities. So hopefully, that can come to us.
Mr. Sheldon?
Just going to add, Mr. Mayor, that we are maintaining a spreadsheet, if you like, of the properties that we're visiting and putting together a summary that will be shared with members of council in terms of some of the feedback that we're getting.
Thank you. Councillor Kerwin?
Just a, a question to Mr. Palmer. I think you're probably familiar with Liberty Village?
Absolutely.
And you're familiar with the parkland across from the front of it? Or lack of it?
Lampard Stadium?
There's a, yeah. There's a, supposedly a park there, and Mr. Vague and I took a tour to that area. And the, would you describe that as an urban park?
It, it, yeah, it's part of a system. The problem with Liberty Village is that they didn't build any more of it.
They didn't build any more of the park?
They didn't build any more of the system. It's, there's more parking lots than parks in Liberty Village, and it's, it's, it's a very poor public realm.
Yes.
In Liberty Village, and a mistake.
A mistake.
A total mistake.
Yes.
And that comes from incremental approvals with no consideration of an overall strategy for an urban park system. The city of Toronto loves to take cash in lieu, which is why they have $400 million in the bank and don't want to spend any of it.
Yeah.
So Liberty Village is a good example of a bad plan.
Yeah. And that's what I don't want to happen in Newmarket. We've been very careful with protecting our walks along the river and our trail systems and our parklands. And whenever you intensify, you reduce breathing space. And breathing space for me is a safety net, because when you intensify and put more people into an area, unfortunately, from what I, my reading is, you create also social problems. People don't have something to do. They don't have something to go to that's attractive and beautiful. And I use, as you say, Liberty Village as... And I use, as you say, Liberty Village is not a good example of planning. So I think in all of this, we have to be very careful, that we don't take money in lieu of property or land. We must, I've been a great believer, when former mayor Tom Taylor and I always believed that we took land rather than money. We were frowned upon at that time, but when I look at what we've created with the Tom Taylor Trail, and the Dave Kerwin Trail, and all the parklands that we have in Newmarket, and when I travel, you see that, where people have failed to have a vision for the future. So I know we need intensification along Davis Drive, but also we need green space, and we need breathing space, and we need a safety valve for people who are now living in 200-square-foot condos or 400-square-foot condos, where to go, where they can get out and be with their fellow mankind in a peaceful way, not burning down the system. So I think we, we're progressing, and I think we have to be very careful. So as long as I sit on council, I'll always take land rather than the money. And I believe down the road, people will be thankful for that. The other thing you mentioned is you were in an urban park where you have to remove the trash two or three times a day, is that not what I heard? I was in Prince George, and I saw something highly interesting, and it's called a, its name is quite funny, actually, it's a big-belly solar compactor. And I sent emails to Mr. Neuhammer and to Chris Kalamutu, that when you take trash, it's volume that backs up the system. Therefore, if you compact it, it reduces it. And have a look at that. I'm going to have our staff do a look at it. It takes that volume and it compacts it, so you don't have to remove it as often as that. And it's a, Prince George is an interesting city. It's a beautiful city in British Columbia. But they have some, a lot of innovative things that they're doing to reduce the cost, but also, you know, we have the same complaints, that, you know, after a weekend on the main street and so forth, there's litter all over the place. It doesn't have to be that way. You can compact it. You can reduce volume by three, so you can get, just compact it, and the sun does it. Or sometimes you hook it into a battery as well. Very interesting, new technology. And it, as we're going to urban parks, those are the things we got to look at, to keep them neat and clean, because that's what you want. So very interesting, the presentation, and I salute you.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton, what's the average new dwelling unit that we have now? Is it around the 300-400 range that we have in terms of allocation? I think that's the number I'm looking at. So I'm just looking at the concerns around too many units and too many projects coming forward. If our market can absorb, say, between 300 and 400 units a year, new, once we build out our greenfields, then in a large measure, you'd see a project like a 700-unit condo complex would probably take three or four or five years for the market to sustain the uptake on that. So it's the size of the market also that might, to some measure, determine how many units get built. If we have a good parkland dedication, you're not going to see 10 units go up all of a sudden, largely because I don't think the market could absorb it at that rate. So that might be another consideration. The other item, too, is that we're looking at parkland dedication, and I don't believe our calculations to any extent measure the value of the assessment growth that would come with that if the development comes forward. So it's, it's, A, it's a very thorough report. I think we've been at this for a while, and the reason that we've done this is to create some sense of continuity, some sense of stability, so that Newmarket becomes an area where at least one or two or three developers might think that Newmarket is the place where they'd like to start some intensification, which is really, this all goes back to our incentivization and our, you know, trying to get the intensification to go forward so that we can get some assessment and go forward with the density that we're looking for. So it's a lot of work, I thank you for that. It's not easy, and every time, every question has three or four answers which lead to more questions, so it's a very difficult challenge for us. But I appreciate you trying to make it as straightforward as is possible. So thank you for that. Motion to receive this presentation, and we'll bring forward report number 11, is it? No. Which report number are we giving? Report number six. So motion to receive the presentation, refer to report number six. Regional councillor, seconded by councillor Kerwin, or Tom? Councillor Hampton, all those in favor? That's good, thank you, appreciate the presentation. Let's bring forward item number six, then. It's report number 2016-7, Parkland Dedication. Okay, we've received your deputation, thank you.
Thank you.
We have the recommendations. I have a motion with respect to the recommendation, and it's very straightforward, council adopt the park dedication bylaw for the town of Newmarket, it's contained in attachment number one. Councillor Hampton, is there a second? Councillor Twinni speaking to it as the mover, councillor Hampton?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm still going to follow this.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Twinni? Okay, thank you. Regional councillor?
Yeah, I'd like to propose two amendments. And the first one is that the bylaw reflect that the end of the three-year period, the cap would move to 50%. And the second one is that, is that staff be directed to include a language which indicates that the 25% cap is only available in the absence of, in the absence of an OMB appeal?
Okay, do you have a second for those motions?
He's asking for an amendment, right?
Yep. Yeah, the amendment, I'm sorry, the amendments. So we have a second for the amendment?
I would second it, as I spoke on incentivizing this type of growth. I would like to get some clarification from staff or from the gentleman who produced the report as to if we actually put a 50% parkland dedication, is that something that would work?
Okay, I think that's a question that we can't ask.
Can ask?
Yeah, but we, yeah.
Yeah, it's important that we know that, you know, that we're working within the boundaries available to other municipalities, and if other municipalities are working within that 50% dedication, or is that totally out of the realm of the norm?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I also make a request? Just because I think they're two very different ones, and there might be different comfort levels, can we deal with the two separately, like a second for each one?
Exactly. Yes. Well, we could, we can deal with them separately, and we could, some people could move it just to-
Yeah, whatever.
Put it on the table.
Thank you.
But we will deal with each of those separately, I think that's appropriate. So, am I saying that you're seconding it as a conditional? You will be able to ask the question, so can I just take you as the second?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so it's seconded by councillor Hampton. So the mover, then, is regional councillor, right?
Yep.
Okay, regional councillor speaking to it as the mover?
Like councillor Hampton, I would love to hear from our staff member and our consultant, again, on both of these issues. I think the one is less complicated, the 50% after three years, but still to hear on that, and we did hear some feedback. But my understanding is, the only thing I would add is that it sounds like the majority of municipalities don't have a cap at all. So if they don't, then a 50% cap has still got to be within the realm, and if anything, more permissive than those that are existing. But maybe I'm misreading that, and that's the kind of clarification councillor Hampton's seeking, so would like to hear on that. And then, you know, in regards to the OMB appeal, I thought, you know, I think I'm hearing different concerns. I mean, I understand our commissioner clearly has a concern about that, and then our staff said maybe it's not as clear as it could be, but it sounds like other municipalities maybe do have less clarity, so, but to hear more on that would be helpful as well. But I think it's, I think I heard the consultant say, in his opinion anyway, that it was doable. But if we could hear from everybody a bit more, and if we could do one at a time, that would be, I think, help the thinking.
So we're dealing with the amendments now, so the first amendment, then, is the, is that the language would indicate at the end of a year that the cap would go to 50%?
In three years.
In three years, sorry. Cap would go to 50%. So can I ask the two of you to come back again? Will I consider this an extension of the presentation?
On the, on the question of moving to a 50% cap, for the vast majority of development applications that you should be getting in your intensification areas, that would be totally fine. Lower-density forms, such as townhouses, in fact, I think 50% would be too high, and you would have to default back to the Planning Act as the control requirement. So, again, it works for most of everything, but you would need a qualify for the same, or the provisions of the Planning Act, whichever is less.
So can I ask a quick question on that? But in our secondary plan, I believe in the entirety of it, it's, there's a four-story minimum, is that not correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the low-density designation, I believe it is four stories, yes?
I think so. So four-story town, stacked townhome development would be about the minimum, so I don't think we'd be looking at even three-story town developments in this area.
Well, it would depend on the lot area, total FSI, floor station index that you're achieving. There are still scenarios, again, I've been testing this in Markham, so it, there are scenarios where a 50% cap would be too high. I agree with the basis of the approach, and all I would be looking for is the statement or the provisions of the Planning Act, whichever is less. Because it may in fact be that a lower-density stacked townhouse development would not generate 50% of the site area, it would only generate 45%.
Okay, gotcha. That's great, that's fine with me, that wording is-
Or the, so be 50% or the provisions of the Planning Act, does that seem as-
Well, I think, no, it wasn't "or," it was "or," whichever is lower.
Or the provisions of the Planning Act, whichever is lower.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you see that as a friendly amendment, councillor Hampton?
Yeah, I appreciate the intention, and I guess the Planning Act supersedes the motion, so, yeah, I'd be good with that.
Good. Okay, any other questions here, speakers? Councillor Hampton, as the second or the amendment? So the amendment, then, is something to the effect of that at the, at the end of three years, that the cap be changed to 50%, or apply the provisions of the Planning Act, whichever is lower. So that's the amendment that we're voting on now, if there's no further discussion. All those in favor of that amendment? Okay. That amendment passes. The second amendment, then, is the language with respect to the absence of OMB appeal. And perhaps we could get further discussion and opinion from our solicitor on that.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we could propose some language that might achieve the objective that you are trying to achieve without offending any of the rights that I was speaking of. We want to, we don't want to have a bylaw that will be challenged, but we may be able to provide you with some language that would give you the comfort that you're looking for in terms of being able to negotiate up to an amount, and having a criteria that might include, you know, that it's a negotiated agreement, which would allow us to, you know, not even have to refer to an OMB appeal. So if you could give us an opportunity to think about that, and we can provide something.
Do you think about the council, or?
Yes.
Might be appropriate, just to take a look at that?
Yeah.
So we would refer this amendment to council for consideration?
Yeah, and we could also read the consultant about that. Any thoughts on that?
Certainly, I would leave that to a legal opinion. Interpretation of the Planning Act, and all of those things are appropriately done through that.
Okay. So we'll defer the amendment to council, is that the appropriate, or refer the amendment to council? Do we need a motion for that? Might be appropriate? Can I have a motion then to refer?
I took the original amendment as second, yes.
For both?
Second, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So-
If you just do a vote.
To defer?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, well, I don't think we've had a motion to defer that. Or are we taking that as a friendly amendment?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm taking that as a friendly amendment to defer. Okay, so the motion, then, is to defer the second amendment to council. Okay? Just the second one, okay? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you.
What are your main motion?
Yeah, now we've got the main motion as amended.
Which is councillor Hampton and councillor Twinni?
That's right, councillor Hampton and councillor Twinni speaking. Who's the mover? You're the mover? Okay, you want to speak to it as amended? Motion as amended, no further discussions? No further discussions? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. This is good. It is also about 3:30, might be appropriate for us to take a break now. Would quarter to four work, or should we say 10 to four? 10 to four? Okay. Let's take a break until 10 to four. Okay. If we could bring the committee back to order, please, if people could take their seats.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Good, good. Okay. Now, do we have any other presentations? We do have one more presentation that is with respect to item number nine. I think that's what we do have one. Yeah. Okay, so let's, Mr. Shelton, if we could begin with the presentations relative to the Ray 20 complex low-impact development and the Alliance Park Drainage Update, and that's all related to report number 2016-34. Item number nine in our agenda.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council for indulging staff in this presentation prior to receiving report number nine on your agenda. It became clear after the report was on the agenda that it would benefit from a little bit more explanation in terms of the project particulars, and perhaps even some of the graphical representation of what the project will entail, and provide an opportunity for us to indicate what some of the benefits of the project are in relation to, to this item. So.
Peter, if I could get you to move a little closer to the mic?
Oh, certainly.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, our Director of Engineering, Rachel Prudhomme, and myself will run through a few slides, and if there's any further questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So this item is really about trying to improve the rainwater and stormwater management on the Ray 20 site. In the 2016 budget, we were carrying an item for this work, and after the detailed design was done for the project, we determined that an appropriate budget in excess of the preliminary budget indicated in the 2016 budget was required. And so, this work relates to treating the rooftop runoff and the treatment of stormwater close to the entrance, the front entrance of the Ray 20 Recreation Complex. On the drawing on the screen, it indicates that there's a parking lot right in the front, as well as a drive, circular drive aisle, a drop-off area.
Maybe if you could move the, the, as you're referencing it.
So, in, in the entrance to the complex here, and in this area, there's a circular drive aisle and a parking area in the front. So the, the measures that are contemplated are to introduce a rain garden feature, separating that in the landscaped area, introduce permeable pavers or permeable surface in the parking area here, and as well at the entrances, features that will address the rooftop runoff adjacent to the buildings, and improve groundwater infiltration so that it reduces overland flow. And all of these are considered LID, low-impact development treatments for improving the way stormwater is managed on the site.
If I can add to that, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Part of the reasons for doing this is to reduce the amount of surface water that's draining into, directly into the Western Creek, actually, from this development. We know for sure that Western Creek is much affected by lands to the west of Young Street, all the way into Ray 20 and the, the Upper Canada Mall. So, this is in an effort to reduce that particular flooding issue that's been plaguing many of our residents, and we've met with them on several occasions about some of the flooding in their backyards, especially in the Ontario Street area. Another reason for this is also a health and safety issue. We have a lot of ice buildup on the sidewalks surrounding the building, and this will help drain the water back into the ground so that we won't get as much ice and less risk of having accidents.
Okay, thank you. So here are just some illustrations about what these features would look like. The shot on the left is one of these drainage features next to the entrance, and as Rachel was indicating, the roof drainage, rather than flowing across the area and onto the entranceways, creating icy conditions, would be directed into soft surface areas, appropriately landscaped with rocks and vegetation, and promote groundwater infiltration. The central illustration would be an example of pervious pavers in the parking area outside the front, and the illustration to the right is what we would look at in terms of an example for a rain garden or a bioretention island that receives drainage from the circular drive aisle and any of the parking area, brings it into this lower-lying area that would be vegetated, and allow the water to seep into the ground.
These designs were selected as a result of very intensive design charrette that we held this year, and at that design charrette, we had our consultant who's designing the project, as well as members of engineering services at the town, public works, facilities, and our commissioner also attended, as well as several people from the LSRC to recommend the proper treatments that we could use for LID options.
And so just the final slide for this particular project. There are various funding sources that are being brought forward to achieve the objectives illustrated, and much of it is coming from external funding sources, including the illustrated, and much of it is coming from external funding sources, including the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority and Environment Canada. The town is also contributing to the project, of course, and that funding would come from our asset replacement fund. The preliminary budget for this was carried in the 2016 budget as $350,000, as indicated in the leftmost column. Now, with the design complete, the realization that the budget should be set at $450,000 to complete the works, the LSRC has agreed to contribute 50% of that extra $100,000, and the remainder coming from the town's asset replacement fund would achieve the budget required to deliver the project. There is a note at the bottom of this slide and indicated in our report that there is time sensitivity with respect to the contributions for our external partners, and the project needs to be completed by March 2017, which essentially means that we need to start the project now to be able to complete it, or this year to be able to complete it by then. And the LSRC has also agreed to offset the funds of our funding required for our senior climate change coordinator and would contribute $15,000 towards the salary to take that position as the project manager to complete this project up to March 2017. So, there's additional funding that would come to the town from the LSRC.
And the LSRC has indicated that their $50,000 extra would be in the spirit of matching funds coming from the municipality as well, from the town.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, we could proceed with the presentation for the other project in the report, which would be Lions Park Drainage, or if we wanted, we could entertain some questions about this one.
Do we have any questions with respect to the RJTLID? Okay. Counselor.
On the map of the drawings for the proposed work, that you've got, like, Phase Two, like a potential rain guard Phase Two in the areas near the complex, is that part of, is this funding part include that Phase Two, is that another budget?
Rachel?
We are looking at Phase One, excuse me, being done this year, and there are several phases that have been identified as a result of the design charrette that could go up to the millions of dollars, but what we want to do first off is just the really essential works for health and safety reasons and to reduce the amount of flow into Western Creek. So, Phase One would be going ahead for sure.
So, but this budget that we have for $450,000, is that just for Phase One, or is that for Phase One and Phase Two?
I believe it includes Phase Two as well, but not the other phases beyond that, but I could get back to you on that specifically. Phase Two shows the rain gardens close to the entrance.
Yeah, I from this, I just see Phase One and Phase Two, I don't see any other phases, so that's why I'm wondering, like, is that budget item, that $450, including all phases that's on this map, like, the drawings?
Yes, the other phases have not been designed yet.
Right.
And they've just been recommended as options for the future.
Which we don't have here anyway.
Right, that's correct.
Right, so these are all, this is the $450, these Phase One and Phase Two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor presents.
Thank you. Just a question about the flow into the Western Creeks. Does that also impact, then, across the street where the regional building is and the regional lands? Because, you know, we hear a lot of concern about the wetness of those lands, their, you know, potential flooding and everything else, and with the upcoming annex building going in there, you know, there's a lot of concern about its ability to handle and what impact that it may have, although the region, obviously, they tell us that that's all under control, but, so, would this, would this help to alleviate some pressure on the creek upstream from there, or is it totally unrelated?
No, it is related, and I guess on this particular site, these are some improvements that are being made to help address overall contributions towards drainage and floodwaters going into the Western Creek. So, there are other improvements on other sites that would also help, but this is just about the Ray 20 site and what improvements can be made here.
But it would help the, sort of, the more adjacent challenge right now, which is the regional property there?
It would, it would help the entire Western Creek in terms of, you know, overall volume and flow in the creek, so beyond this location.
Right down to Ontario Street and so forth, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Regional Counselor.
Thanks very much. Just on the rain gardens, Phase Two, so the largest one you see on the screen, the, I don't know if you can mouse it, so I'm sure we're talking the same thing, but the largest one? No, I think the largest one's down, keep going, next one. So, is this not the...
Oh, here.
That one, yeah. So, the one thing I just pointed out there is that the, depending on what you're going to do there in terms of the rain garden, my upside of doing this, other than the intended benefits, is that it'll cause people to stay on the sidewalk. The negative, or the risk is that, depending on how the rain garden is designed, and I don't know, that people will try to go right through it. So, if people are familiar with the site and go there a lot, everybody cuts through there, or 60%, 70% cut through there. So, it's, you know, the other option, I guess, would be to make a path through the center of it, or make sure it's robust enough to turn people away so that they stick to the sidewalk, but I'm just sort of raising that as a bit of a flag to keep in mind.
Yeah, it's a good point, and, you know, I guess, depending on how it is designed, whether it, there are alternatives where people walk to the sidewalk and out to the parking areas.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, so, it's, it's an element that we could look at in terms of what the desire lines for pedestrians are.
Could you outline the sidewalk? Is that the dark line around the other side?
This is the sidewalk around, and then these are walkways leading to entrances, I believe.
Okay. All righty. Now, there was at one time some discussion with York Region Rapid Transit, given that they might want to give some consideration to contributing to LID projects, given that their design is pretty much along the trail as far as Young Street go. Have we, have we thought about approaching the region to contribute to some of these?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there is a...
Or should that be in camera because it's a negotiating item?
No, there is, there is an interest to look for, look at opportunities for even next in the region to address their stormwater management challenges with respect to the Young Street Bus Rapidway project, and they are looking at different options for addressing that with the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority. One opportunity they were interested in collaborating with us on was for this site, if there's any opportunity to promote more low-impact development projects. At the moment, they are exploring this and other options in terms of what makes most cost-effective sense for the project, but this would be exclusive of any further LID projects that we could do on this site. There are several other projects that were identified in the design charrette that Rachel talked about that could be available to partner with the region on.
Thank you. Any other questions with respect to the 20 complex? If not, then we can go forward on to the next one.
Okay. So, the second project in the report before you was to do with additional stormwater management at Lions Park, and this is a project that involves several different measures to improve the drainage and the usability of the Lions Park. So, again, in the 2016 budget, we carried a item forward to advance this project, and after completing the design work, holding a public information center as part of a Class B or Schedule B class environmental assessment project, a number of improvements were identified as a preferred to make up this project overall, and they include a wetland feature at the west part of the project, improvements to the creek that currently runs through the site, and, and raising the level of the, oh, sorry, raising the level of the property on the east. So, with respect to the wetland feature, this would be on the west side towards Lorne, Lorne Avenue, and this involves excavating some of the soil in this area to create a wetland feature that would still maintain a low-flow channel to prevent stagnant water from forming, but it does improve the downstream water quality, and it does offer an opportunity for an educational and recreational venue with respect to boardwalks through the site and interpretive centers overlooking the wetland area. And so, this would be towards the west part of the site. Along the south part of Lions Park, there's an existing drainage channel that is not functioning properly and, in fact, has eroded parts of Darcy Street, such that the base is falling into that water course, and what the project intends to do is improve the depth and width of that water course and moving it slightly further north from Darcy Street to prevent the negative impacts on the roadway. And finally, towards the east of the site, the excavated material from the wetlands would be placed to raise the land area, which would be made much more usable for parks, open space, and programming areas. It also would improve the usability of the playground feature that regularly gets washed out towards the south part of it and offer some opportunities for connecting paths. This also would address some longstanding poor drainage issues at the rear properties on Timothy Street, identified in the top part of this, top part of this slide. So, this area here would become much more usable, and it's just west of the existing basketball court and north of the realigned drainage channel.
If I may add to that before we go to the table, we've been approached by residents of the area many times to do something in this area because of the flooding potential that occurs in Lions Park. Whenever it rains heavily or when there's a seasonal high flows, like snow melts, the area does flood and it stays very soggy for a long time, so the land can't be used. That extends into people's backyards as well, so there's some concern from the residents. Also, the fact that there's a very low gradient of flow now, the water is pretty stagnant, there's a limited flow velocity and limited vegetation, and that means that there's nothing in the channel to inhibit any kind of sediment transport, so there's, there's a lot of sediment that goes through and contaminates our streams further downstream with sediment. Also, we did a hydrological, hydrogeological assessment in 2015. We wanted to see if we could replace what's there now with some low-impact designs, and you may be wondering why we don't have any LID elements in this particular design, and the reason for that is that the water table is so high that it would preclude us from using any kind of low-impact development features that we can use, for example, at Ray 20. Also, Lions Park is located within the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority floodplain area, so it's subject to the regulations from the LSRC, and there's a lot of, in addition to the sediments, there's a lot of broken gabion baskets, broken concrete, and other debris in the creek that needs to be cleaned out. We also need to improve the fish habitat. This is a warm-water creek. We did some electrofishing and found absolutely nothing there where there used to be fish and wildlife around this creek, so we want to improve the fish habitat and provide some small pools with, with extra depth to provide refuge for habitat.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. So, just finally, again, focusing on the project costs and funding. In the 2016 capital budget, there was a preliminary budget set of $304,000, and that was largely a, what I'll call, a placeholder budget, because it was felt that significant external funding from grants could be secured to advance this project, and I understand that it was about $144,000 earmarked from our own asset replacement fund to also contribute towards this. However, after doing the EA study and detailed design, the budget was significantly higher to undertake this project, and it amounted to $615,000. The external funding from Environment Canada came in at $155,000, and the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority had $16,000 to add to this project. So, it does seem that a draw of $444,000 on our asset replacement fund would be required to complete this project, and again, the external funding is, has a similar expiry date of March 2017. So, I think that's, that concludes the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Questions in, Counselor Hampton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you know, I drive by this area, the Lions Park, on a daily basis, and when we have a significant weather event, you see the water standing there, and I, I know the people along Timothy Street there, you know, concerned about the standing water, and it often stays there for many days. I have a question in regards to this, this green line, that's, that's the drainage, that's going to be basically a drainage ditch, for lack of a better word. Is that correct?
So, the plan does show a swale, so I guess that green line there does indicate that, you know, there would be a higher area formed and a drainage pathway towards the water course, and outlets would be created.
Okay, can we go to the...
Sorry, this is actually a redesign of the Darcy Creek that flows through the Lions Park property.
So, the drainage area that's right beside the pathway, beside the tennis courts and Peter Gorman Swimming Pool, that will be basically eliminated or at the, going west from this green line? Is that correct? So, where the blue ovals are, at the bottom?
Oh, at the bottom.
Right now, that's kind of where the drainage swale or ditches is, very deep?
Correct, so that is the current water course, and that is what has been eroding Darcy Street.
Right.
And it's not functioning properly, so that would be redesigned, moved a little bit further north, widened and deepened so that it actually functions as a proper water course with these blue pool areas to promote better water quality.
Right, okay, good. Now, the first slide, can we go back to the first slide? This wetland. So, Stuart Scott School would be just south of this wetland, is that correct?
Yeah, Stuart's on Lorne Avenue is south of this, yeah.
So, the end of this brown pathway to the left, or to the west, I guess that is, that's basically Lorne right there, is that correct?
Lorne would be...
Right there.
...in this area.
So, the, has there been public consultation? You know, we don't have a representative from the ward here. Has there been public consultation? Because that's going to significantly, significantly change that area, I guess, in the, the way it looks and the way it's going to function. I, you know, it's, I understand the measures are great for dealing with this, but have we gone out to the neighboring properties and just showed them this and said, here's what we have?
We've held a PIC, actually, and it was very, very strongly attended. It was one of our more successful in terms of attendance.
That's great.
And the responses were very positive. There were some concerns identified by some residents, and those were addressed by our consultant, and in essence, the entire community was really interested in this and very much welcoming.
Okay, great.
With drying up of the lands.
There's also, Darcy Street separates the, separates the wetland from the school. So there's a road that goes through there.
So the water that's sitting there, like we see this wetland area, and you see the picture above it and the map below it, like what do we predict? Like, is there much standing water there? Is it, what is it? It's going to be like, I know it's not going to be like a storm retention pond or something like that, but there's going to be, is it, can you explain that to me?
Do you have an idea? So the, so the look and feel of the wetland area here, you know, is meant to provide some capacity to detain storm events and rain events. I believe it is meant to dry out after the rain event, but it would be planted with vegetation that, you know, would be adaptable to sort of wet, wet conditions?
Like bulrushes, that type of thing would be there, or?
Whatever vegetation that...
Would just go naturally?
Would be...
Natural grasses. Actually, the wetland area is meant to accommodate any kind of overflow from the creek. So normally, we would expect it to be relatively dry.
Okay.
And the plants that we've selected for that area would soak up a lot of that moisture.
In the dry condition, I would imagine there would still be, you know, like a low-flow water course going, mantering through it, but in a higher rainfall event, then it would fill and then gradually drain. So it would be excavated to be more low-lying so that it would absorb the moisture and not affect the open space parks area that's further to the east.
And I have here on the boards that were presented at the PIC, which was actually in June of this year, the boards do indicate that the wetland would be planted with non-invasive native aquatic plants that would be incorporated into the design to look aesthetic.
Okay. All right, thank you. It's quite a change for the area. Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Regional Councilor?
Thanks very much. I guess some similar questions to Councilor Hampton's, and so, but I agree that's a good turn, I mean, I think it's at in here 25 people, which is good considering there's only, you know, a number of houses really immediately adjacent. My concern is, is let's say the corner lot, that, you know that one corner lot that kind of comes into the park a bit there? You can see it even on your map that's up there right now, it drops down lower? No, back to the map, the map you're on shows it perfectly, which, that, yeah. That's a house that actually sort of comes into the park, it's an odd one, but just use that as an example. I'm always concerned that the, you know, you have a PIC and you get a good turnout, and that's probably the majority of people, and they seem pleased, but two or three people somehow didn't become aware of it, and they back right on to what's going to become a wetland, which is, I think it's a great idea, but it's a significant change, right? And I'm worried, how do we know that everybody is aware of it and either chose not to come or was positive? Because, I don't know, for some park uses, and they said, oh, we're putting, you know, a new playground, a trail, well, somebody misses it, it's not, I just think this is a, if that was my house right there and somehow I missed that, so any thoughts on that, or should...
Yeah, notice was given as per our normal PIC policy, so letters were sent out to all of the affected households, and also it was advertised on our website and in the newspaper.
So this person, being so close to the project, would likely have received direct notification.
So do we know if, so they would have received notification, and I didn't see it, but it generally says about changes, et cetera, right? I don't know what the wording is, but somebody, so here's my real question. So are the, I think it looks like about seven or eight homes in particular, they're going to back on to the wetland, right? If I go across six or seven? You know, some less so as they get down, but that kind of range? Do we know if all of those signed in, or, I guess what I'm, and I know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I really think those people need, we need to make sure that they're, they weren't there, they didn't come, they were on holiday, it was junk mail, or they saw it and they just said, oh, park improvements, great, I'm not, you know, that's great, I'm glad they're improving the park, as opposed to something this significant, I think we have to make sure that they're aware, that they really know what's, I mean, and the other, and it leads to my other question, but again, I think this is great. I think the majority of the residents will be happy that we're doing some work about the ongoing problem, and so I'm really glad we're going down this road. But look at some of those houses, three or four of them have a walkway behind them now. Like, that, again, I'd be, you know, you know, whenever we do a trail and people come out, it's, oh, the lights are going to be close to my house. And so I guess what I'm getting, I think we, we need to take some measure to, to, you know, hand-deliver or particularly those that are most affected. I mean, I'm not as worried about the rest of the street, but those six or seven, so is there some measures we could take to just reach out and ensure, and if part of it's just double-checking the list, and if all the seven were in attendance, then, fine, we can...
Yeah, that's certainly doable, and, you know, we could check the attendance at the PIC itself to see whether they had any comments to offer, and also, you know, to ensure that they have been notified throughout the project, including the information centers for the, and notification of the environmental assessment report having been completed and the like. And even, you know, during the project's completion, we can ensure that they are notified of the different elements of the design as well.
Yeah, I don't, I know, I, we want to keep moving on this, and this is a really good project, I want to be clear, but maybe even, I, you know, I feel like, probably like many others around the table here, part-time work five councilor right now, but I almost feel like I should go and knock on six or eight doors myself as a ward councilor, probably would if they were here, and just say, you know, here's the, here's the handout, you're sure, you know, you're aware that this occurred because council's coming up in a couple of weeks, and then we're moving forward, and as we should, but I, I'm thinking, something needs to be, I don't think I'm overreacting to say the significance of creating a wetland and somebody with a walkway behind these houses, I think we need to, we need to do something to make sure these people are fully aware.
Just print it off and just show it to people.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
What we could do through you, Mr. Mayor, is check the addresses of all those houses that you're referring to, and then counter-check them with the sign-in sheet...
Right.
...to see who was there. And whoever was there, we know their...
That's right.
They had their chance to make their comments, and they probably did. And then whoever we don't have on the list, maybe go ahead and contact those individuals.
I would, that would be, I'd feel a lot better if we could do something like that, it's a, I think it's a...
Absolutely, we can do that very shortly.
And was there any feedback about the walkway that's closer to the houses at the back? That part, I'm surprised a couple, and some people might like it, but I'm surprised some didn't sort of think, the piece that comes back from, and close to the, closer to the house lot line?
If I'm not mistaken, this is higher elevation than down here as well, so the houses on Timothy, aren't they a bit higher than...
Oh, they are, for sure, yeah. I just meant the, some people don't like, oh, encouraging foot traffic near my backyard, safety, security, yeah, I mean, just...
You know, I can maybe help a little with that, because I was at the, at the PIC, and there was one individual that I had a conversation with, and said, you know, he noticed that the walkway was closer to his house, but he was willing to concede that it was a significant improvement, and so it was a good compromise. So that was, that was one level of feedback that I did receive directly from a resident. But then again, that's, that's one. And I'm, you know, based on the conversations that we had, I'm thinking that it was one of those that was close to the walkway, so, so I'll just offer that up as a discussion that I...
I don't, I don't want to interfere too much. I would suggest to staff, even consider just having the piece go out, and, you know, then you don't, because it doesn't connect anyway, or connect in some ways, because then there's a, there's a pattern, right?
Yeah.
But if, since it doesn't connect anyway, where it stops is somewhat, I think there could be some sensitivity to that. I would be a little bit, but anyway, I'll just throw that out there as a thought as you finish the design.
Yeah, and we can review the purpose of that as well, like if it's meant to be a sort of an interpretive station, or whether it does lead to anything, but we'll look at the design.
And my last question was, was the, was the school board involved in the discussions? And what are their feelings on safety, wetland? I mean, there already was a creek, and, but was that, what was the outcome of that?
I don't know, that's something we could look at as well and get back to with respect to what their involvement was.
They would have received a notification, wouldn't they?
Yeah, as a real base in property owner, they would have been notified of the project and the EA study that was underway.
Okay, because you're gonna, you're probably get, very likely, again, and I'm sorry, but I'm thinking of it like a, the local count, but you're probably going to get the school council responding. I don't think they're gonna be, they're gonna be glad that improvements were made, but they're probably going to say, you know, I don't know, but they might, so, just raising the idea about what the school board or the school council...
For sure, both positively and negatively, because, you know, it does offer an educational opportunity as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, no, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Bazant.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I think that the, certainly the design and the benefits are considerable to this, and, you know, I know the importance of working with the environment in order to be able to maintain our, our use of the lands effectively and to avoid sort of the challenges caused by the flooding and so forth. But I do have to ask the question about, you know, if, if this is something that, that we approve in terms of the budget allocation for this, what impact does that have on other projects that we might have anticipated or planned as part of the asset replacement fund? Because, you know, this is sort of new news for us now, and it's a pretty significant hit notwithstanding, you know, the contributions of the other partners in this, but there's still a bottom-line impact to our asset replacement fund. So I just want to better understand what, what this is either going to require us to put aside, or, you know, is this sort of well within the resources that we have within that fund? But it is a pretty significant difference in terms of the original thinking of costs, and I understand why, but I just think it's important that we also, as council, understand, well, what does that mean somewhere else?
Note, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's a fair question, and we do appreciate that it is a larger request of the asset replacement fund than was originally anticipated contributing towards this project. To a large extent, that's more a question in terms of the health of the reserve fund itself, and, you know, I guess, and working with our Director of Finance, we could provide you with, and members of council with some more information with respect to the health of the asset replacement fund. It is a draw that is relevant for the type of work that's being done, so to improve the asset and to maintain it in a state of good repair and function. So it is appropriate to be able to use that reserve for projects like this. But I think it's a fair question, and we could provide you with more information with respect to the health of the asset replacement fund, if that's helpful.
Well, and certainly if there, you know, if there's any... Sort of impact or offset somewhere else that we'd have to look at in, even in a short period of time from what was planned in the budget.
Right. Not, we're not aware of that, but we can provide you with some more information.
Maybe Mr. Mays could help us, but what's the scope of asset, the ARF contributions that we're making on an annual basis now? Just to kind of put it in perspective, if that helps.
Mr. Mayor, I think the total asset replacement fund contribution, we're looking at these two projects, is approximately $644,000. Is that spelled right?
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't see from my angle, but, yeah. That, we do have sufficient, currently, we do have sufficient funds in asset replacement fund to that, to do that. The, this is stormwater management. Stormwater management is included within the, at this time, is included within the asset replacement fund for roads. As you may recall from our asset management plan, we do see for at least the next, this was a couple of years ago, but for the next coming 10 years, eight years at this time, we do have sufficient funds within that fund to fund the projects that were contemplated at that time. So I'm not seeing that this is going to be a severe adverse impact on our ARF at this time. I mean, it obviously is something that has to be made up for because I don't believe it was contemplated in the original estimates for stormwater management. The other thing to consider is that, and we'll be coming back as part of the budget presentations, is the creation of a separate stormwater management rate. And at that time, we'll be making allocations for the asset replacement fund, dividing in essence between what is necessary for roads and what is necessary for stormwater management. And we'll be taking this into consideration. At that time, we'd be able to more graphically demonstrate if we do see there's going to be any adverse effect of this, but I do believe within the confines of the stormwater management rate going forward, that it should be able to recover these funds.
So just trying to get the number...
Contribution?
The contribution that we make out of, out of the tax levy every year to the asset replacement fund, in the range of...
Twelve million?
Twelve, thirteen million?
The, the tax supported is approximately $10 million, and I believe it's $5 million on the rate supported. As these projects, when would these projects start?
They have to be completed by March 2017.
Okay, so, yeah, so they would actually be part of the transition. Some of it will be funded from the, from the asset replacement fund and the tax-supported, and the remaining from the rate-supported, which would be the stormwater management rate, but I don't see it having any impact on the tax rates at all.
Okay. Thank you. And I think the question was more so, would that defer other projects? So, so if we take a look at the scope and the scale of the contributions in the range of 10 to 15 million dollars in the asset replacement fund, knowing that 10 is committed towards stormwater management or a portion thereof, it wouldn't have a significant impact, and it's one that we could manage, is the answer I'm hearing. Yep, thank you. Any other questions, Councilor Hampton?
Yeah, I'm going to ask this question related to asset replacement. You know, our asset replacement is used to replace many of the town's linear assets, our roads, our pipes under the ground, our buildings and things like that. And we're setting aside this money for our future and future generations to cover the cost of our aging infrastructure. So my question is related to, is this the first time we've used our asset replacement fund to contribute towards creating specifically a wetland?
Sounds like a good question.
Good question. I, I believe that if you talk about that specific type of project, perhaps it is, but if you talk about in general terms that use NASA replacement fund to, to replace and build new stormwater management-type infrastructure, this would not be the first time.
Yeah, I totally get it. It's less pressure on our, on our infrastructure for stormwater management in the future, and I think it's a step in the right direction. I guess that this leads me into another question in regards to, you know, we received a report, and I actually thought it was on the agenda of potentially having a new stormwater management levy in the future. And I'm wondering, you know, these are two very significant projects with a healthy price tag on them that we know is necessary to deal with major storm events and to put less pressure on our infrastructure in the future. Have we identified any other areas that are going to be really significant projects like this in the future, in the short-term future, or something that stands out in your mind? You know, I know this old Lyons Park or this area here is just, it wasn't really, or is in really great need. I'm wondering if there are other things, because I can't think of something, I'm just wondering if you can.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that's, you know, something that our stormwater management master plan is looking at, and we are undertaking that work. And Rachel, you can speak to the progress and the status of that, but that is really meant to identify the future needs for stormwater management in the town and set, set the requirements to assist how the stormwater rate will need to be set to help fund those projects. And that includes not only, you know, the pipes in the ground, but also the overland features, including stormwater ponds and water courses and wetlands.
And we are pushing more towards a lot more LID implementation throughout the town, but this year, we're doing two other major stormwater projects, one being the Sacred Heart Drainage Project, where there has been flooding on town lands that's affecting private properties, and also in the Wayne Waratah area. And we continue to monitor the Ontario Street issues as well and see how we can alleviate those issues. We're looking at possibly doing some stream bank restoration projects in the future. We're looking at possibly doing some stream bank restoration projects in the future. A lot of private groups in the town are involved in stream bank restoration, and we feel that as a town, we should be also participating in that and leading that area. But that will be for the future.
Okay, great. Yeah, you know, I guess we all, you know, we have our own wards and areas that we live in and areas that we drive by. And when we talk about, then all of a sudden, you know, I think of the fairgrounds, for an example. But I'm not aware of, you know, the ward council would understand better what's happening in that area. So I'm really looking forward to see, yeah, how that's going to be dealt with and how we're going to come up with strategies to reduce the amount of stormwater that's flowing through our system. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Twente, then Councilor Kerwin.
Sure. Thank you, Rachel, for bringing up the Wayne Waratah, because I was just going to, when you brought that up, Tom, I was going to mention the fact that we have a PIC actually coming up with regards to that because there has been extreme flooding to the residents in that area from these storms that, you know, I mean, these flash floods of torrential rains and things in that area. So we do have that coming up. So that would be one that I know from my own area that would be up and coming, I guess.
Thank you. Councilor Kerwin?
Yes, just a question. And Sacred Heart, when do you think it'll be started and when do you think it'll be finished?
We were just talking about that project today through you, Mr. Mayor. And we are hoping to get it done before the end of this year. If not, we wouldn't do the construction through the winter because it would be a higher-risk construction. Therefore, our tenders would be much higher. So it would have to be deferred to the spring if we're not quite ready to be able to do it this year. We're finalizing the design at this time.
And number two, the fairgrounds, again, it's a low-laying area, and we get floods right by the curling center that we've been working on for years. And as we're doing these projects, that's another area, because that's, the fairgrounds really is a town facility, huge town facility. And we've talked for years, and I had Gil Akins doing an upgrade of that park. And part of the problem there is, of course, the drainage from the curling club that floods onto our fields, and it does cause flooding. I'm a great proponent of what we're doing, and I thank you for doing this. I think that's where we should be spending our asset replacement fund. It will eliminate a lot of problems down the road. And it really doesn't matter whether, to me, it's in Ward Five or Ward Two or Ward Seven. It's genetic. We need it across the town because we are getting flash floods. And this will save us a ton of money down the road. So it's the money we'll spend, and I thank you for being proactive.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'll take a motion then to receive the presentations and refer them to item number nine. Councilor Kerwin, seconded by Councilor Broom. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Let's bring item number nine forward then. And that is the recommendations and report 2016-34. And that's the funding requirements to go forward with these projects. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Councilor Kerwin, seconder?
Sure.
Okay. Councilor Broom? Any further discussion?
There was just to acknowledge the staff direction on the contact with residents.
Staff direction sufficient. Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Being done. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. I think that takes all of our presentations in. Oh, is there one more? Ah, yes. Okay. Now, don't go away, Rachel. So we'll call Peter and Rachel back now for the Water Street Crossing. If you're on Fitbits, I think that I'll be just getting extra steps in.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, for indulging a brief presentation by staff on this item. We did put a report on to the addendum agenda last week indicating the status of the project and its imminent construction. And we just wanted an opportunity just to address some of those points in the report as well and offer an opportunity to speak to them a little bit more and address any questions that you might have. So just going to highlight that the report is really an update on the pedestrian crossing safety initiative. You know, this measure has been worked on for a number of years at the town to address the pedestrian safety needs at this location on Water Street at Doug Duncan Drive. It is a fairly busy pedestrian crossing. It's a busy area, both for motorists and pedestrians. And the intent was to try and provide a feature that would offer pedestrians greater comfort and safety, real safety improvement for people crossing. So the previous updates, and there have been at least three previous updates on this project, have identified that a pedestrian refuge island located between the eastbound and westbound lanes as you cross Water Street be the preferred safety measure to offer crossing pedestrians a chance to cross one direction at a time and offer them good sightlines to see to make that next crossing. There was a pedestrian, sorry, a public information center that was held in July, and we can talk a little bit more about that in the coming slides. And we also wanted to give you an update on the timing, the budget for this project, and then speak to some of the ways in which the traffic impacts would be mitigated. And again, Rachel, please feel free to jump in at any point.
You're doing a good job.
So the island itself, and this is meant to provide an illustration as to the design. So it would sit in the center, as I mentioned, between the eastbound and westbound lanes. It would provide a single lane eastbound and a single lane westbound through the crossing. And marked lines would be in the pavement as well as depressed curb to indicate where pedestrians should cross. Once on the island, there would be railings and physical features to protect them from the crossing, from the motorists in their vehicles beside, and then offer them a two-stage crossing to go to the other side of the street. You can see that in the eastbound direction, there is additional curb work to narrow the roadway. There is a bus bay as well as a through lane and a left-turn lane that currently exist. And this significantly narrows that to provide the pedestrian with a shorter crossing distance, and it's much more clearly defined. There would be pavement markings just to the east of the bridge that would indicate how vehicles should be aligned as they approach the area. And then as they pass through the intersection on the way towards Prospect Street, this configuration offers good alignment as vehicles pass through. Within the intersection, in the eastbound direction, there would be opportunity for vehicles to turn left to go north into Duncan Drive. There is an illustration in the report that shows how a left-turning vehicle would queue into the intersection and still, as with most left-turning vehicles, they would be out of the way of vehicles continuing to go through the intersection. As more vehicles turn left, as a second or a third vehicle in a row turn left, then there would be a period of time where through motorists would have to wait. So just speaking about the public information center, it was held on July 5th, and it was at Riverwalk Commons, very close to the pedestrian refuge, proposed pedestrian refuge island and installation. The, it was fairly well-attended. I believe there were 12 members of the public there and members of staff, consultants, performing the safety audit. And members of council were there as well. And it was meant to communicate the elements of the design, to show the aspects that people might be concerned about, to show how pedestrian safety was improved, and to illustrate what, how the consultant safety review were being addressed with respect to crossing distance, alignment, pavement markings, lighting, et cetera. And in general, the people who left comments at the PIC were in support of the pedestrian crossing improvement. There was one person who was concerned about the... Oh, about whether there could be some traffic control introduced as part of the island to stop traffic. And it was indicated that that was not possible because of the proximity to the railway tracks. And Metrolinks would not allow a signalized or a stopped traffic condition that would queue vehicles towards the tracks and across that rail crossing. And the individual was satisfied with that explanation. So with respect to the construction, the project has been tendered and a contractor has been secured. The project is meant to start in September after Labor Day. We do have an interest in completing this project swiftly. And so there was a clause in the project to have the contractor complete this work in a timely fashion this fall, according to a schedule. And the budget for this project came in just slightly higher than the 2016 capital budget allocation, but there is sufficient budget to complete the work and any contingencies as well. The traffic impact mitigation, and this is probably where most people have an interest in knowing how the traffic condition will be altered at this location. Staff and the consultant have had a look at the peak hour volumes and vehicles turning left at Doug Duncan Drive in the eastbound direction, and any impact that a stopped left-turning vehicle or two might have on the queuing back towards Main Street or over the bridge. And the analysis does indicate that there is sufficient queuing space in that area so that peak hour volumes would not extend back to Main Street on a regular basis. Notwithstanding that, the traffic will be counted, and queues will be observed and assessed post-construction, both during weekday and weekend periods. It is a condition now where the construction on Davis Drive has largely been completed, and any traffic diversion that, over the previous years, may have come down towards Water Street should be refinding its way back towards Davis and other routes. So we're interested in completing these traffic counts during, you know, what will be fairly stable conditions once the project is completed. And the consultant doing our peer review and safety audit of this intersection did indicate that it may be necessary to restrict left turns in order to promote traffic flow on Water Street. We feel that that is not necessary from the outset, and we feel that the left turns can be accommodated there. But we will be monitoring it, and if required, we would look at other ways of mitigating queuing, such as improving the east-west traffic flow through the signals at Main Street or at Prospect, working with the region to provide more east-west green time, if it's a concern to keep traffic moving. And then alternatively, we could always look at, if it's necessary, to introduce left-turn restrictions during peak periods. But we don't feel that that's necessary right now. That concludes the presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Councilor Kerwin?
Just a comment. The walk over the pedestrian aisle is very similar to the one that we have, I believe, at William Row. Is that correct? Very similar. That worked beautifully. I compliment you on, again, taking an issue that's bothered many of us for decades.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It would be similar. The standards have been upgraded since that island was introduced. And this would, this island would specify the latest railing that is required for pedestrian refuge islands.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Being done, then, a motion to receive this presentation and refer that to item number 30. Councilor Veig? Councilor Bezant? Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's bring forward item number nine, it's number, no, item number 30, yeah? And that's report number 2016-36. The recommendations are to receive the update and effectively the project would go forward as presented. Motion to receive. Councilor Veig? Seconder? Councilor Kerwin? Any discussion with respect to the motion? Regional counselor?
I apologize to be, I'll start by apologizing to be the fly anointment on this. I've given this a lot of thought for quite some time. And to try to defend my position somewhat, I have raised concerns throughout the process regarding the elimination of the left-hand turn lane and some other aspects. You know, I appreciate staff's effort to continue to try to find a solution, but at this point, I find myself unable to support this direction. There's a number of reasons. I, when I read the report, and I think it's a good report, but, you know, I do see, you know, the consultant raising the issue of the potential need for restricting left-hand turn altogether, possibly in the future. You know, there's phrases like "the quick dramatic and fluctuating volumes can easily congest Water Street." We're planning on undertaking full traffic counts for weekday and weekend conditions in the post-area construction. Given the peaking characteristic track flow, there is sufficient length to accommodate this queue at most times. There's, you know, the discussion up at Prospect, the full diversion of left-to-turn vehicles to Prospect, and I recognize it might not be the full that would go that way, but would begin to make the left-hand movements there close to capacity in terms of volume-capacity ratio. But moreover, the storage length may not be sufficient. And then probably is important for me is that we're saying that the weekend restriction issue can, it's harder to determine since events at Riverwalk Commons and the occasional closure of Timothy Street, the closure of Timothy Street between Cedar and Doug Duncan would have a different traffic pattern. And so the weekend, the understanding of the weekend impacts are probably less, fair to say, less understood at this point. I then go to the island itself, and I have to say, the more I look at it, I think that we're going to have a potential issue with pedestrians coming out of Ferry Lake, walking. The way pedestrians flow, right, they're going to have to come down and go 10 or 15 paces to the left to cross. And many of them, especially younger people, will just cross in front of the island. I'm quite convinced of that, and time may tell, but I think that's an issue. But by far the greater issue for me is that, is that this not having a left turn lane anymore there. And by the way, and it was missed by me, and I don't know if all of council noticed this, but, and it was pointed out by staff, to be fair, but the bus layaway is being eliminated too. So previously, we would have had a left-turn lane into Riverwalk Commons, a through lane, and a bus layover. So now when the bus stops, it stops that single lane of traffic fully, as well as any significant left-turn queuing. We'll stop that single lane fully. It is a single lane only now, as opposed to the bus layover as well as the left-turn lane. And I think with Davis Drive being, functioning differently, and Timothy Street being closed for farmers' markets and other events occasionally, when you have these large events that we have, the number of vehicles coming through this area, I mean, I know it's an important pedestrian area, and that's why we're struggling with this, but the number of vehicles that come through this area at times at large festivals, and we have not many of them now, I just, I feel that we're tightening this, we're constraining this. This is a road diet that I think might be unhealthy for the patient. And I'm just, I can't at this point take that step. I still have to say, I believe, well, maybe viewed as inadequate by some, and I'm at the danger of sounding like I have solutions that the traffic experts aren't necessarily... on, signs not unlike, that are mentioned here to put in anyway for this proposal, that point at this pedestrian, uh, you know, area and pedestrian crossing coming up. Um, and I, and I have to say, I, so, I, I don't wanna debate every point in the report. I think there's, it's, it's a fair report, but for me, there's, I have too many misgivings, um, the biggest one being the left turn lane being gone, potential left turn restrictions at peak times, festivals and events, the Cedar Street closing, uh, weekends, uh, and also this issue of, of people just crossing in front of the, uh, the island. And, um, for those reasons, I can't support this. Uh, if, if it were not to pass, uh, um, it may very well pass, but if it were not to pass, I would ask us to go back and look at alternate designs that, uh, did not eliminate the left-hand turn lane, which is, again, to try to defend myself somewhat, something I raised earlier. Uh, I'll close by saying that, um, it, it may very well have been my fault, and if it was, me a culpa, but I did not understand that this was going to tender. Um, I thought it was, we were gonna revisit it in some form or another, and, uh, but I think, you know, whatever, that, that's the case, and that's okay, uh, but, um, I think, uh, my only request would be, and it's not to place blame, I think it's probably to make sure that I don't miss things that I should catch, perhaps, because there's a lot going on, but if, if something is going directly to tender, I think it should, it, it would be helpful for me if it was just said very clearly in the last report, you know, subject, you know, not even subject, after public consultation, this is going to tender. Um, so it's really plain. And if it did say that, I apologize. I, I missed it. Um, but anyway, so those are my, uh, my, uh, issues and my concerns, and, uh, I think the Riverwalk Commons, we've, uh, hit it out of the park with it, uh, uh, people are thrilled with it, and I don't wanna be in a position of people saying, "We can't get in there," and the area is, um, traffic congested now. We're trying to make it pedestrian-friendly, but if you have cars always sort of queued up in here and, and not able to get through, that's not pedestrian-friendly, and, uh, so, uh, you know, keep in mind, you can't get through that and use that, a walkway, through the island if there's cars, uh, blocking you from getting on or off, uh, to the other side. And so, those are my, uh, my issues, and I can't, uh, support it.
Thank you. Uh, this is back-to-school meeting, so I'd forgotten to ask the mover and the secondor to speak to them. So, um, Counselor Kerwin moved it, I think? Or Counselor Veig moved it. Did you wish to speak to that as the mover, and then Counselor Kerwin as the secondor?
Couple of comments. I do appreciate everything that, uh, Regional Counselor Taylor is saying, and I do recall these are points that he brought up, that we had, um, d- discussed, um, at, at length on, on this, but I definitely do recall, um, this, this discussion, particularly on the, on the left, on, on the left turn. That being said, we have more and more seniors in our community, and we've always had, uh, had families, and there is a need or demand for some sort of a refuge island in, in the center. I am, um, uh, I think this will, um, for those groups that need it, I, I think this is, quite frankly, essential. Um, I, you know, I do have, uh, a few, a few concerns, uh, maybe not, they don't run as deep as, uh, Counselor Taylor's, um, on this left turn signal and how, uh, vehicles will be queued, but nevertheless, I'm looking at it as a balance of, of something, um, that we need, and we have, uh, fairly limited o- options there too. So, at this point, I'm perfectly willing and, um, happy to, to, to go ahead with this. Um, time will tell. If it turns into, uh, a worst-case, uh, scenario, um, and, you know, we may say, "Oops, we tried," but I really don't think that that's, uh, going to, going to be happening there. Um, for that, I, I think we do need that island refuge for, for seniors, and, uh, families with, uh, kids with young, uh, families with, uh, young, with young kids. So, it may not be perfect at this point, um, but I do think it's something that we need to go ahead with.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Kerwin, as the secondor.
So, as I say, have a look at, uh, when we tried it up at, uh, William Row. You know, the same, same arguments were used against it, but it went in complete success for those residents who are in twenty and forty William Row and other people who are crossing over. Now, this, uh, this type of, uh, refuge is, uh, has even been improved. Uh, the safety matters are there, and, you know, we've been facing criticism about we've done nothing in this area for decades. Uh, we have to move ahead with something, and, uh, we all have been inputs or, we've all had criticism about the fact we haven't done anything. So, I'm, I'm prepared to move ahead with it, Mr. Mayor. I think we've got a solution here. Let's give it a try.
Thank you. Counselor Hampton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm listening to everybody's comments, and I, uh, have my concerns as well, um, along the same vein as, uh, Regional Counselor Taylor. I am worried that, uh, with the farmer's market and people looking for parking and wanting to make a left-hand turn onto Doug Duncan, that it's, 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 it's going to be a, a challenge, and, you know, you, you could, with Timothy Street being closed from Main Street, um, on those days, it's, it's, it's gonna be a challenge. Um, I agree with the other counselors as well that we need to find, uh, some solution, and we've been trying to deal with this for years. Um, four years ago, somebody came through the intersection at Doug Duncan and, and T-boned my car, and, you know, uh, there's, there's a real need that we protect the pedestrians in that area. Um, I'm hopeful that if the queuing does build up on the left-hand turn area and, um, we really see some traffic jams happening there, that we come up with a solution, whether that be, um, directing people along Main Street and having them get access to the parking in the back through the, I'm not even sure the name of the street, the street that runs, uh, between, uh, Stiver Vale and Leck and Chippen Malt, that we have some really great signage. Um, we do need a solution to get people safely across, and, um, for that reason, um, I will be supporting the, uh, the, the motion or the recommendations in front of us, and hope that, uh, if we, uh, have concerns and we have some traffic queuing, that, uh, we as a town and our staff can react very, very quickly to, uh, a- address some of those, uh, um, issues. So, I will be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Twinney.
Uh, thank you. Um, again, I, I, along with, uh, Counselor Hampton, I agree, there is, um, some concerns with the way, you know, I mean, the structure of it, but I think the problem is, is that we were faced with a little bit of a odd situation here where it's not such an easy fix with, uh, because of the railroad tracks, and some of the ideas that we all had, including myself, thinking, "Oh, it'd be great just to have a, you know, stop the cars and have a lit, uh, crosswalk," which, you know, I mean, to the regular layman, seems like the most, um, easy and desirable way of doing it, is just, you, we can't do it. It's not, we, it's like, we can't, we're not even, you know, able to do so. So, you know, I mean, I agree that I think, um, the island being set back from, um, Doug Duncan is, people are gonna, some people are gonna omit that and just gonna run across, um, and continue to do so, uh, but, um, we do have to do something. We've been, we've been trying to get something put in place for this for so many years, and we've talked about it, and, you know, I mean, being down there, we see how, how it can be, uh, quite an issue, and I, I'm assuming that, um, i- is this in any way gonna be eliminating any of the, um, we often have, uh, off-duty police officers directing traffic at times. Will this still continue because of our, is this gonna be limited, this is gonna allow for elimination of this, or? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
That's your note, Emma.
Yep. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that's something that we'll have to monitor as well, um, certainly, we don't wanna detract from the safety in any way, and the inten- whole intention here is to, you know, put pedestrian, uh, safety first and foremost in anything we do here, so if there is continuing need for additional, uh, paid-duty officers, then that would have to be addressed by the, you know, working with the event organizers and the town staff as well.
And just to add to that, uh, the paid-duty officers are not normally paid by the town. They're part of the organization's cost to hold an event there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm going to be supporting this as well. I think it's, uh, been a long time coming, and we've had to go forward, uh, and it's not without some challenges, and I'm confident that staff will look at those challenges and, and find the solutions that we need to make it the best possible solution. It may not be perfect at the outset, but I do believe that, uh, we have a commitment from staff to, to modify as we go forward, particularly on restricting the left turns and things along that line. So I will be supporting it as well. A call to question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Thank you. I'm back to the pulled items next, item number five. If you're gonna do it in the following... Yeah. We'll do it that way. Good, Andrew. Okay. Now, items without presentations, uh, community service recreation fees and rates. Item number five. Is that pulled? Yes. Okay. All right. Item number five. The recommendations are there. There are, there are some, um, administrative corrections.
Um, sorry. Yeah. I guess I have, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, some ques- what? Sorry? Oh, you want me to move them? Yes, I'll move them. I'll go ahead and move them.
Okay. Move my counsel. I, I think I have Counselor Taylor and, uh, Counselor Twinney, Counselor Taylor. I'll count on you on a future motion, Counselor Kerwin. Okay?
Um, we have, um, um, along with the, uh, the fees and everything, will be our new fees for the Old Town Hall, and, um, I wanted to, um, I guess I have a few questions to staff about, I guess, how, you know, I mean, just to give me some information of how we came up with the pricing, and how does it compare to comparable, uh, facility use? Because we're setting now, this is the setting point for moving forward, and, um, I just, I guess, a little bit more information about, 'cause it is the first time we're setting these fees, and I, I think this, uh, facility, um, could be very well attended and used, uh, you know, as long as we promote it properly, and I think, you know, weddings, and I think about so many events that it can be used for. So, I guess, uh, through you, we're just, just wanted to get some feedback on how we decided and determined the, um, setting of the fees for the Old Town Hall.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Counselor Twinney. Uh, very good question, and, uh, staff has spent a lot of time and consideration in terms of making sure that we consider pricing around, uh, what will be a tremendous asset in our community going forward. So, I'll ask, uh, the Director of Recreation and Culture to, to give council some more background in that regard.
Mr. Service.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for the question. Uh, there is a couple of things that we did to ensure that, uh, the pricing model that we came up with was appropriate. Firstly, we looked at all of our existing prices for hall rentals and, um, broke it down to per-square-footage cost, so we wanted to ensure that we were not out of the ballpark with our existing, um, amenities that we have. We also did a, a bit of a comparison study with other sort of cultural-type venues that are out there to ensure that, um, that, again, we aren't out of the ballpark. The reality is that Old Town Hall is, um, is a unique building. It's, uh, so there isn't really a, a proper, easy comparison that we can use, so this was our best attempt to ensure that we have it in affordable, um, place that has opportunity for people to utilize that space while still being consistent with why we price things the way we do.
So, through you, Mr. Sir, that's, I mean, it's, I hope that's great to hear. Um, I guess, do we, and through the, our fee structure that we put into place, have we been able to determine? 'Cause this is a huge expense. It was a very, you know, it was a costly and lengthy, um, project, and we want, you know, I mean, as a municipality, I wanna make sure that, are we ensuring that we're gonna be, um, you know, treating this, you know, as a bit of like a business, that, you know, I mean, like, there's other facilities out there that rent halls for, you know, beautiful venues for weddings, et cetera, and, and I just wanna make sure that we are, um, that it should be affordable, but it also should be appropriate, I guess what I'm saying, to what the facility is, which is this, you know, beautiful building. It's, it's not just Alliance Hall, you know, I mean, it's, it's a gorgeous facility, and, um, it's, I, you know, I mean, it's, I just wanna, I guess, and I'm sure, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm sure that we are gonna be maximizing, I guess, our profits from it in a way that's, is affordable to everybody, but is also, um, maximizing our profits to the commu- to, to the municipality on this, on this structure.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think, um, the, the best way that I can address that is to say that, um, we don't know for sure that, that we've hit the right mark. Um, there is gonna be some trial and error that has to happen, and, um, so part of, of our strategy is to look at having something that's priced strategically that we can maximize usage and, and really ensure that we aren't leaving money on the table, but that we're not leaving people out, outside the door. Um, but we do intend on, on reviewing that over the course of the year, and, um, and looking at ways we can strategically add prices. So things like weddings, for example. Um, right now, we've included a, a sort of a base hall rental, but then there's additional fees for services that can be added on top of that as, as we go on and as we morph and start to evaluate how we're operating that facility. So, I, I guess the easy way to say this is, this isn't the first time you're gonna see this. It will come back with more opportunities for improvement, so.
That's, no, good. I'm, I'll look for it. I mean, it's gonna be interesting to see how it plays out the next, over the next year, and how, you know, I mean, how it all, you know, comes into play, so, just, thank you for that information. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Regional counselor, as the secondor.
Thanks very much. Yeah, I, I don't wanna let this opportunity go by to, to recognize what I think is something that's important here. The fir- first thing is, we've had people, uh, deputants in the past come with concerns about increases in, uh, in our, our fees in, in recreation or in certain aspects of recreation, and we've had some, some, um, people put things online, you know, that are, that are unhappy occasionally. Uh, but what we're looking at here, for all intents and purposes, with the very few exceptions, few exceptions and tiny exceptions, we're looking at a zero percent increase in fees, and I think we need to stop and, 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 uh, take note of that. Uh, you know, our costs are still going up, our employee costs go up, our infrastructure costs, our utility costs, and so this is, uh, this is an, an important, uh, you know, to, to, to note, to take note of, and I, and I hope that, uh, we, um, we make sure we share that, uh, frankly, I think it should be some sort of notice coming out of the town, uh, because it, it, as far as I'm concerned, with the exceptions are so small, this is, uh, for all intents and purposes, a zero percent increase in, uh, fee, uh, recreation parks, cultural recreation fees, and, uh, I think it's a great, uh, it's a great, uh, breather for the community, and it's one that should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hampton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for the report as well. Um, my question is in regards to, uh, for our fees and for recreation, cultural events, and, um, as the things are set out in this report, um, all of the fees for these, uh, things that are happening, the town is offering, um, are not covered totally by, um, full-cost recovery for, uh, a fee that's charged to the, the end user, and I'm wondering if, uh, I could get a number on, um, what is, what is covered by, um, user fees, and what is being subsidized, or what is being covered by, uh, tax-supported? Do we have a number on that?
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, maybe I'll, I'll kick it off, and Colin may have some more to add, but, uh, as a general rule, it depends on, on the audience. Uh, so, we, we tend to target a, a cost recovery for programming, uh, for adults at, at around seventy percent, uh, for, uh, for seniors and for, uh, children, youth, it's around forty percent, you know, it's somewhere in those, those ranges. So, when we actually establish pricing for programs, we take into account those considerations, and that dates back to many years to, uh, the original service price policy, and, and that, that framework of philosophy is still a consideration today as it relates to, to pricing.
Do we have, do we have an actual number that, uh, is covered by tax-supported, um, from the, you know, the, the percentages, and what's user fee and what's tax-supported?
Yeah. Probably the easiest way to answer that would, um, and I don't have it at my fingertips, but we'd have to go back to the budget, and it would be basically the departmental budget to have all in, departmental budget, uh, and then you take the revenues that are generated against the, the overall cost, and it is correct. We don't generate the revenues to cover all costs, so the difference would be, in essence, what's being covered by the tax base as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
The, one question I, I would have, and it's not necessarily relative to the recreation and culture fees, but I do know that there are two sets of fees that we need to publish early, and that's why we have them on the agenda, and I know it's not a good question, or it's not a good time now for us to look at this, but in the longer term, maybe if we could introduce the fees and charges earlier in the budget cycle so that we've been able to define what the revenue assumptions are, and then we'd be in a better position to review that as we go through the budget, uh, process independently. Um, so, it's, uh, not to alter or to, uh, influence this in the current cycle, but in a longer-term plan, maybe that's something that I think could be more beneficial for us as we go forward. Uh, so it's just a suggestion and a consideration that we have all of our fee bases established, and then when we get into the budget cycle, we, I think we're in, we're in a firmer, we have a firmer, uh, grounding in terms of, of how we would establish the budget. Uh, now, you, did you wanna respond to that, or?
Mr. Mayor, on that, it's, it's a very good point, and traditionally, as we set the recreation and culture fees, they're actually linked very closely with the publication guide, which goes out to twenty-six thousand households, and so we align that, and actually, this is a little bit later than we've done traditionally because, uh, Colin's changed
So it's not to alter or to influence this in the current cycle, but in a longer-term plan, maybe that's something that I think could be more beneficial for us as we go forward. So it's just a suggestion and a consideration that we have all of our fee bases established. And then when we get into the budget cycle, we, I think we're in, we're in a firmer, we have a firmer grounding in terms of how we would establish the budget. Now, did you want to respond to that?
Mr. Mayor, on that, it's, it's a very good point. And traditionally, as we set the recreation and culture fees, they're actually linked very closely with the publication guide, which goes out to 26,000 households. And so we align that. And actually, this is a little bit later than we've done traditionally because Colin's changed some of the timing of the guides. But one of the things that does really back the budget is as these fees are set, we are in the budget, preliminary budget planning process for next year. And one of the key considerations, and it goes back to the regional counselor's point as well, is that it relates to both price and volume. And so there's that connection. And so as staff are setting these fees, they're making forecasts in terms of volume as it relates to that price that's being charged for that program. So there is that consideration that goes into the setting of the proposed fees.
I think you've done a good, good job at that. And, and again, the only point I was trying to make is if we could get that earlier on into the cycle, that makes it a little easier for the consideration. Mr. Shelton.
Just say, Mr. Mayor, that we'll take that as direction to look into that, if that is acceptable to counsel.
That was all it was intended for. Counselor Vega, and then Counselor Curran.
Very quickly, and it's just a comment, this reminds me when my son was younger and playing hockey and find that the, the town fees for rental price might have gone up marginally, very small amount, but it's not unusual for the fees for the organization can go up ten percent, twelve percent, fifteen percent, because they had different needs, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm just talking about hockey. Don't want to single out soccer or, or any of the org- Pardon me?
Aquatics.
Aquatics, all, all of those. Where the, the fees charged to the parents aren't exactly in lockstep with the fees often char- that we charge the organization. So that's just kind of a, a comment because wait till the registration starts and you will hear from, from parents, you know, why did the fees go up fifteen percent? And it's really not us all, all the time that are, are driving these fee increases. We just provide the facilities. But there are organizations that manage themselves that charge fees to the parents based on their own needs, whatever their budget may be. So it's just a comment.
Good point. Thank you. Counselor Curran.
No, just, just a comment. Excuse my voice. Regional Counselor Taylor made a really good point. There's only fractional increases here. It really is a zero. And thanks for doing that. Number two, at one time Aurora charged a little bit less than we did. That's no longer the case. People who used to go to Aurora to use the aquatics are now back using the Magna Center. It's, we've always had a philosophy of use or pay, basically, as Ian has said, for adults, it's up to seventy percent that is covered by the adults who use the facility, sometimes even higher. But just a question to you, Colin, because you come from, and on the Old Town Hall, you come from a, a private public background. You've worked for the YMCA and I believe, and for Markham. Has there ever been a structure like we have, and our Old Town Hall is an absolute jewel, where it's been basically run by a professional and it's gone private? Is there any example of that where, I mean, our Old Town Hall is unique. But I often wonder, you know, sometimes you, you have to run something effective and efficiently. Is there any model out there that's been run by a private corporation where it doesn't cost the town any money at all? I know we own the structure, but it can still be in your departments. Is there any indication where you have a professional person who knows how, how to market the Old Town Hall? And that's, that's really the direction I'm looking at. We need someone who has the expertise to market the Old Town Hall on a professional and any break-even or profitable point.
Mr. Service.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There are examples of, of cultural type facilities that are operated by third parties. Probably the closest at which would be directly south of us. The Aurora Cultural Center is offered by a, a third party. There, in that particular case, it's a not-for-profit board, but the, the town leases out the responsibility or contracts out the responsibility, I should say, to that third party to provide the service. I am not aware, though, in, in the case of Aurora, I know that the town does still provide an annual operating subsidy to that. I am not aware of any artistic-type venue that doesn't receive some kind of subsidy from the municipality so that the municipality is still supporting it in some way. I could give you examples of, of sport or recreational facilities, but not, I'm not aware of anything from an artistic or cultural standpoint.
But this building will be beyond cultural. It'll be weddings and, and conferences and events and things like that, Colin. Am I correct?
Mr. Service.
Yep, you are correct. It's going to be a variety of different venues. And I do believe that we do have the expertise within our staff to operate this as a business and to operate this in an efficient manner to ensure that we're maximizing opportunities there.
That's exactly what I wanted to have. And the good news is, Erica has raised so far, one person, thirty thousand. And I don't believe we'll have any problem raising the full forty thousand. I don't know whether the piano will be there before you open, but we're looking for expertise who use the piano to give us advice on what type of piano we should be having, but we will be having the funds. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just add further, just because it relates back to programming and Colin had mentioned earlier that we're going to go through a learning exercise. But I'll give you a quick example of some of the thinking right now is that there's going to be a balance, because we expect this building is going to be incredibly popular and, and there's going to be lots of interest from various types of users, not the least of which will be potentially the, the wedding market. So one of the considerations that Colin and his team have been talking about are doing things such as analyzing the type of uses. So we have a balance between community, you know, dance groups going in and plays going in and, you know, weddings going in and other types of, of, of events that go in. And then that will influence the pricing going forward. So we may create, as an example, we may create a bit of a supply and demand model as it relates to, say, the wedding market. So we can actually price it higher than, than just a hall rental, as an example, where we, because we don't want to just become a wedding venue. We want to become still a community place for, for artistic celebration. So maybe if there's a limited number, you know, as the programming plays out, then the pricing may go up accordingly. So there's lots of considerations that we need to grow and learn with in the very early days and then, and then adjust our pricing going forward in subsequent years.
Thank you. Those are the answers, but in the response I would like to know. Well, staff's done a great job in bringing this forward. And I won't repeat the comments in terms of, of how we've responded to communities' concerns over the years. I will say, though, that the service pricing model that we've had for a number of years was the first in many municipalities and was adopted by other municipalities. And it's good to see, and I think it is time for us to review that. And I see the report provides for the fact that we are going to be reviewing those, if not in this report, in the general overview. And it is time to refresh that in terms of what council's priorities are. So I'm happy to support this, these recommendations as we'll see how other members of council know as well. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you. Next item then is the, is item number seven, the Coordinated Provincial Plans Review. Now, in conjunction with that also, we need to give consideration to item number seven, seven A, which is correspondence from, from Mr. Bailey and Basil Developments requesting that this matter be deferred to the next committee of the whole. Now, the next committee of the whole may be when? Next committee of the-
I'm sorry.
Item number seven is the- No, no, this one is the Building and Planning Services Report around the Coordinated Provincial Plans Review. And the seven A item is concerns with respect to what's contained in that report, but the individual's not able to, to meet or to, to make a deputation. So the request is to defer that. Okay.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Okay. And is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on that? Mr. Shelton?
Mr. Mayor, could we-
Sorry. Go ahead.
Could we have the commissioner just set out some of the timeframes in terms of the region, looking for comments? There may be an approach to defer the part that's being queried, but still provide the region with comments, but-
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Bob. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the region has indicated to the local municipalities in York that they are intending to prepare comments for Regional Committee of the Whole for their September fifteenth meeting, I believe. And the deadline for responding back to the province on these four plan reviews is October 31st, which has been a month extended from its original due date. And so in order to provide the region with some measure of comments from the town, it may be a suggestion to provide the bulk of the report to the region for their information and indicate that one of the elements relating to the Oakridges-Morene comments in our report could be deferred. As a suggestion.
Thank you. Now, the mover was regional counselor? Okay. Speaking as a mover, sorry.
Thank you very much. Sorry. And thanks, thanks, and I've given that some consideration, but I think personally, I, having sort of witnessed and been a part of many of these back and forths with the province submitting comments, I mean, they're getting comments from dozens and dozens and dozens in municipalities, and whether ours are separate or consolidated with the region. My experience has been it will make a dramatic difference on how they're received or what attention they get. And I'd rather not single out one issue that the region for discussion or elsewhere. I'd rather just deal with the report later and submit our comments separately. I will say this, just for those who may be wondering, it's not just that the, in fact, it's not, not nearly as significant that the, that an interested developer is asking us to defer. What is important here is, and it hasn't really, I think in a meaningful way, come to this table, it's probably come here in some way, but is that the region has been looking at this area for a east-west connector, a piece of infrastructure that could be important to traffic flow and congestion and other issues that are important to our residents. And I think our position on the Morene, I mean, it's already, it's already pretty restrictive, but this would, this would be even more restrictive and it might, and I'm only saying might, I want to, that's why I want to wait to, to have a fuller look at this. But, so I would ask that staff also maybe prepare for the next meeting to provide comments back on, on the impact of infrastructure, et cetera, and the changing of designation. But I, I think the key is to make sure that we're not, you know, tying our own hands here in respect to what might be a needed piece of infrastructure through what is largely a piece of the Morene. That's, I don't want to get too, but it's, it's very, it's in quite an urban setting. It's not, so I think it's something we need to look at closely as the region's been pursuing this in conversations with our staff, with, with the developer and with others to try to see if this can, this can be realized at this location. So I think that's, for me, the bigger issue, that we understand the implications of that before we, we, and another thing, I, I think it's also, for anybody who's forgotten, it's also worth noting that this, the position that we have here was put forward previously and was denied by the province. So, I mean, the other part is, you know, anyway, I'll, I'll leave it there. But I think it's something we need to just to slow down by one cycle, to look at from our own perspective about the connectivity. And if that allows the developer to, to provide some comments as well, then fair enough.
Thank you. Counselor Curran is the second.
Yeah. The, the person who's asked for the deferment is a person by the name of Paul Bailey. And he's been probably one of the most conscientious of all our developers. And as John said, what the region is looking for is mid-block collectors, and those are things we haven't had in other quadrants of the town. And I think that's what we're missing. And I have no, he couldn't be here today. I have no problem with the deferment, so at least he can address the issues that he's concerned with. It's just being absolutely fair.
Thank you. Counselor Bazant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would also be looking at it from the standpoint of what impact, if anything, that, that the direction that was presented here would have on, on other lands as well that are in the Oakridges-Morene area. And specifically, I'm looking at the Glenway Westlands. And, you know, are they completely different in terms of the degree to which they are considered settlement versus other areas? And so I, I'd like to just have a better understanding period of, of, you know, the impact of the Oakridges-Morene on, on parcels of land and what, what this direction would mean to, to other sections as well.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion then is to defer to the next and to receive the item number seven A. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you. Item number 10. This is the mosaic park? Yep. Is the, the recommendations are there? Are there, is there a motion?
Yeah, just, just a, a mote point, Mr. Mayor, and-
Could I have the motion first, Counselor Curran?
Well, I'll move it to get it on the floor.
Okay. Is there a second, or regional counselor? Okay. Counselor Curran.
Good. Just under the comments, you know, and it's, park features will include several noticeable place structures and components which reflect this theme, such as a crab-apple orchard. Okay. What do crab, crab-apple tree produce? They produce crab apples. Okay? Now, how many have harvested crab apples? Anyone harvested crab apples lately? Good. Good.
They were, they were a little friendlier when I picked them, but-
And my concern here is, I've seen this happen. There's an enormous amount of work in harvesting crab apples if you make crab-apple jelly or whatever. The bottom line is, they're not harvested. They fall to the ground. And it's going to leave a lot of work for our staff. And I'm thinking in the future, when I'm not here, to go and pick up those crab apples. But not only that, I found out at Alexander Muir, they had a crab-apple tree. And the crab apples fell and what did it attract? Yellow jackets, hornets, bees by the dozens. And it stung a couple of their residents. And it will happen here. Not that I'm opposed, I'm just trying to, to have a, another type of tree that our staff doesn't have to go over and rake them all up or pick them all up, or they become mush, or people step in them. And you can see that, too, when you walk along and there's a crab-apple tree or apples and they fall on the ground and all the bees are attracted, they become mush. So it's just, it's a minor point, it's a mote point, but, no, it's, just to substitute another type of, of non-fruit-bearing tree that kids can go out and play without being stung by a wasp or a hornet, Mr. Mayor.
Is the direction to staff our consideration? Okay.
Can we clarify though, because I don't think they mean that literally, to read the line.
Okay.
I don't think they mean that.
Okay. Well, let's clear, yeah, let's clarify. Do you want to clarify?
That's here, maybe I've explained, but I, I was just thinking, saw you know what happened on the other end of the year and I was falling.
Okay. Rachel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We really appreciate your concern in catching a small detail like that. You'll be happy to hear that the crab-apple orchard is a place structure. And I'm looking at the list of trees that are going to be planted, and there are a lot of willow trees, maples. There are choke cherry trees, though, and red raspberry, red currant, dogwood, more willows, but I don't see any crab-apple trees on the list.
So they anticipated the direction and responded appropriately.
Okay. That's, it's just about, even, even, just be, the chick, I'm not worried about the chicken because I'm the first guy to allow egg-laying hens in his ward, okay? I'm not concerned with that. But I know what happens when you have apples on the, I mean, they just attract yellow jackets and hornets. I just saw one of my neighbors remove one because no one harvests them anymore. Okay?
Regional Counselor is the second.
Thanks very much. Can, just, if you could at some point, just, because I don't think it's included, but just send us maybe a, unless it's not that far advanced, but a sense of what the place structures are or what's, oh, you do? Oh, great, okay. Maybe I can look at it later.
Circulation?
That's, that's good.
Oh, you've got, oh, you've got copies for, yeah, I'd love to see one. Sure, sure. Thanks. And the only other statement I really wanted to make was, I, I just couldn't let the opportunity go by to, to, to take a moment and recognize one of my more favorite lines in a report in some time, which is that we're putting in a Tai Chi area to reflect the values of Quaker spirituality. I couldn't let that go by without comment. So that was very enjoyable. Thank you, whoever wrote that.
As it happens, I'm taking Tai Chi this eve, this, this winter.
The Quakers will be interested to know about their, their strong ties to Tai Chi.
Okay. Any further questions? Counselor Bazant?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to also speak in favor of this and, and, you know, express how, how wonderful this, this whole section is going to be, notwithstanding that it's, it's got some very innovative place structures and, and a combination of structures that will, will
suit younger children as well as older children, but also families, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of thought and detail that has gone into, to this area that I think is really going to make it one of the more exciting play areas in the town. That coupled with the, the LID area right on the corner is really going to make this, this whole section a showpiece for New Market and people coming into New Market, as it's right at the corner of Batherson Davis. We've got a beautiful new sign there that is lit up in multicolored lights, and so once this is all complete, I think it's really going to be quite a spectacular place to go, not only for people in the immediate neighborhood, but also from, from across town. So I'm quite excited about it, and, you know, kudos to, to everybody who's been involved, not just in terms of the playground itself, but the LID area there, which is, which is first-class and, and quite ahead in terms of best practices for that kind of thing. So, well done to everybody there.
Thank you. And I believe that there is some deputations coming forward through the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority to recognize the work that we've been doing on LID projects. And I haven't got the date on that, but there is a delegation at the Conservation Authority, so we may be asking some staff to kind of outline some of those programs. So, just an early heads up. Okay, so we do have a mover and a secondary on this. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It was well negotiated, Mr. Sheldon. Appreciate your efforts in that regard. Next item is item number 14, and this item is the report regarding the, and the investigation of a closed meeting of council held on February 22nd. I know that the recommendations are to receive. Could I have a motion with respect to that, Regional Counselor? And a secondary for that? Counselor Bezant, okay, speaking as the mover, Regional Counselor.
Yeah, I actually have a question for staff. Do we have a, a cost associated with this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't received the invoice for this particular investigation. The previous investigation was in the order of about $800, I believe.
Thank you. The other question I have is that we've, and I just think it's worth pointing out here that the conclusion was that the town of New Market did not breach the open meeting requirement of the municipal act. The, we've had some, some information's come out, but we had code of conduct, a number of code of conduct submissions, complaints, and then processes, again, with nothing coming from them. There's other types of quasi-judicial processes, human rights, or, you know, other types of requests, FOIs, et cetera, the, even, even things related to election, finance reviews, and I don't know which one of those are not, but do we, I believe I'm correct, and I just wanted to double-check with staff when to expect it, but do we have some sort of comprehensive report that's coming forward on, on some of these resident-driven inquiries and associated costs and numbers?
Accountability reports? Yeah. Mr. Brower?
Sure, through, through you, Mr. Mayor. There is a joint legal and legislative services report, and it will address accountability officers versus previous council direction with respect to the Ombudsman, but we've expanded that to include the other areas of compliance, and we're, we were aiming this fall. We would like to time that report at the same time the Integrity Commission will bring an annual report forward, so that you have the benefit of both that information.
So like October, November kind of thing?
Yes, correct, yeah, probably November, just given my current situation.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bezant is the second. Thank you. Quite appropriate, and I'm glad that we did highlight the fact that the findings were, were what they were. All those in favor of the motion to receive? Any opposed? Madam Curry, thank you. Item number, item number 18.
Sorry, are we getting the minutes?
Moving the minutes?
Yeah, I'll move the minutes, yeah.
Moving receipt of the minutes?
Yeah.
Is there a secondary for that? Counselor Broom, thank you.
Sure. When I was reading through the minutes, there was a mention to ask that members of the Appointment Committee attend the Heritage Committee to sort of understand better what, you know, I mean, what opponents, like proponents of the Heritage Committee have to discuss and, and give advice for, so, which is great, but I'm just wondering if, when, I'm not sure when that's going to be, and I thought I'd just pull it and find out when, if we can get notification ahead of time so that we can ensure that we're in attendance, if that's how they...
My recollection of the discussion when that came forward to the, to the Appointment Committee was that there was the request initially to, for staff to review the priorities that were established by the Heritage Committee, and then determined what the prior, by prioritizing their workloads, that there could be some consideration to, to managing and also inviting volunteers. Perhaps, Mr. Brower, you might be able to clarify that further, but that, that was my general, my general understanding of it, but I'll leave it to the experts.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that was the direction of the Appointment Committee to re, to ask the Committee to look at the work plan, and I, to be honest, this is the first time I, I hadn't, I didn't catch this particular motion from them, so I could probably connect with the Chair and ask. I don't know if it's quite appropriate to have the Appointment Committee, which is, you know, a council committee, a chair and a subcommittee, but...
Sure, okay, so, through you, maybe you can just clarify what, so, you know, means, because I did catch that in there, I just don't want, if you don't attend, and want them thinking that we're ignoring it or whatever, so just if we can get some clarification on that.
Yeah, this, this was supposed to be taken as well in the context of the, the reports, you know, the workshop that we had with the committees and their work plans, so I can certainly follow up with the Chair and see what the intent is and whether that meeting might be even necessary.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Counselor Broom? Okay, thank you. Regional Counselor?
Yeah, I'm, instead of taking, and I know it's been a long meeting, so I'll do it quickly, but if, if staff can provide even back a memo of some sort to us on, and so I'm sneaking this in, I'll admit this, but on the, the building, the house, the heritage house on the Elliott property on Leslie Street, I, I drove by the other day, and it's, it's just going to, I mean, I'll bet, if we go through the normal process, there's probably a couple of years yet before it gets dealt with, the thing will just crumble. So if there's anything we, any options we have, like could we not speak to the developer, but if your, if your plan is to move it to location A, can we not do it now, reinforce it somewhat, and, and ensure that it doesn't come to some unfortunate end, which is looking more and more likely, I have to say, and, I mean, if, if, you know, if the Heritage Committee, if something were to happen, somebody would criticize us, I'd have to say, you're right. I mean, we've got to, I think we've got to take some action on that house, and so, well, whatever the plan is, but it's supposed to be protected and moved with on the site, I believe, right? Is that not the intention?
Yeah. I was going to say, perhaps can we leave that with the, with the CIO to follow up as the direction?
Yeah, that's my understanding, but, yeah, we'll take a look at that. I know it was fenced, but we'll, we'll respond to that.
I think even fenced, I think it's just falling down, it's not even that, it's being... But anyway, thank you.
Counselor Heppen?
Yes, the members of Heritage Committee would also like to get an update on the Union Hotel and as what's happening there, and they have some concerns around what's, that it's, it's not changing from the way it looked maybe a year ago, and there's still boards on the outside seeming to secure it, so there are some concerns, so as soon as that can happen, that'd be appreciated.
Mr. Sheldon?
On that, that was the topic of the task force a couple of times, and the site plan process is either winding down or wrapped up with the work proposed this fall, I believe, but we'll get an update to council members.
Thank you. And I did forward an email on to, to the York Region Rapid Transit Group, and, and the response was that they're fairly close to finalizing site plan discussions, so it might be appropriate to have a follow-up as well. Okay. The motion then is to receive the minutes of the Heritage Committee. All those in favor? Any opposed? Madam Curry, thank you. Now, page two, I think that deals with all of the consent items with the exception of the action item. Actually, the, under action items, then, we have the appointment of the council member to be appointed to the library board. Could I have a motion with respect to that recommendation? Counselor Kirwin?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that Counselor Jane Twinn, Ward Three, be appointed to the New Market Public Library Board.
Okay. If you would write a ferocious campaign. And do you accept her?
I do, and I, I thank you for the, for the support, and I look forward to being part of the public library board. I've not been on that board before, so it's, I'm looking forward to it.
Any outstanding points?
I think so. I would check on my son.
Okay. Any, any other comments? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Congratulations.
And that's carried. All righty, thank you. Reports of regional representatives?
All right, counsel.
Counsel, okay, thank you. Any notices of motion? Seeing none, then, motions? Seeing none, then, new business. Any items of new business? Counselor Kirwin?
I have one very pleasurable announcement. There will be a public open house and information meeting regarding 751 and 757 Gorm Street and a portion of closed Lydia Street road allowance, and that will be held on Wednesday, September 14th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the New Market Community Center in Lyons Hall, and this is being paid for totally by the developer, and it's being transparent in lessons that we learned from the Glenway situation. This is a preemptive strike to make sure that all residents are informed about what's happening, and no decision is made, but everyone's welcome to attend. It is September the 14th, Wednesday, from 6:30 to 8:30, and this notice has been circulated more widely than Planning Act requires, because it's just, it's not anything to do with the town. It's been circulated throughout the entire area, which I call the Village, which will be Sheridan, Perrin, Stewart, Allen, Cedarwood, Maple, all along Muriel, Arthur, Lowell, Gorm, and hopefully, when there are public meetings by the town, that that same information area will be included. This has been in the making for about two years, is that I work diligently with any infill or any development within Ward Two, is that the residents are notified long before anything comes to the town about what's happening within Ward Two. I did that with the case of the two houses on Milak Drive with the Falcon Crest and DeLuca. I've been working with the On Bogart Pond condominium corporations, one and two, that faced on the Milak Drive for about four years, and any other development that comes within my ward. Before it comes to town, the residents know precisely what's happening, and they can ask all the questions they need when we have town-sponsored meetings.
And this, this meeting is in addition to the statutory public meeting, so this is...
Free.
Yep. Good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Heppen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is more appropriate as a motion, but I was approached by a business owner on Davis Drive, and he has concerns in regards to the amount of traffic along Davis Drive. He feels that he's still affected by the construction that did take place and the volume of traffic that's traveling along Davis Drive, and what's happening with Young Street and the businesses affected by the construction that's taking place. I was wondering if it would be possible that we look at our bylaw, which sets out the policy on the amount of signage for a business and on any given period of time. He's asking for help in the, in the way of having some kind of, some relief from our signed bylaw. So, I don't know if, through new business, if staff can look into this, or if it's more appropriate that I make a motion, which is best.
Mr. Brower?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe there actually are a reduction in the fees. I don't know, I don't recall the, the details. I can get back to, to you on that.
Okay.
With regard, and it's on Davis as well as on, on Young Street.
A reduction in fee?
Yes, or it could be a complete waive, waive, waiver of fees, but I'll have to, I'll have to get the details, I don't recall, there was some timeframes applied to that.
Yeah, if you could share that with me, the, the business owner has a fairly, this particular business owner is occupying the only building on the property, and it's a fairly long, and he has quite a bit of frontage on Davis Drive, and he's asked that he, it would be the possibility of putting, I guess it's more of a, it's not a permanent sign, but a, a portable sign, so if I could get some information from you, I can share that with the business owner.
Thank you. Counselor Twinn?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, with regards to the new traffic calming signs that have been put in place in your ward, Ms. Ray, I, I actually went through them, and they do, they're, they're quite different and quite effective, and I'm just wondering, what is the plan of, what other locations have been planned to put these traffic calming signs? Because I know we all have areas of concern in, in our own wards of speeding, et cetera, that's been going on for many years, so I'm just wondering what's happening with those.
Mr. Noemmer?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, there are three installations that have gone in last week, or I guess perhaps the end of the preceding week. They are pilot project locations, and so we are interested in determining their impact on slowing traffic down on three locations where we have had some chronic speeding concerns and issues, you know, working with the board counselor and the residents on monitoring these, these locations and determining what the positive and negative impacts are, and seeing how we might be able to address them. These particular elements are physical obstructions in the roadway, and although they do allow vehicles to pass, they do narrow the traveled, the effective traveled width, and they do cause motorists to slow down. We're interested in sort of the upstream and, or the downstream impacts to see what kind of measurable reduction in speed they do offer, and whether it's sustained, and looking at if they're effective, expanding that to other areas in town. These particular pilots will run through the course of this fall. They will be removed prior to the winter season because of their physical obstructions to winter snow clearing, but we will be capturing the data associated with them now. So I guess stay tuned to determine the success of these pilots, and if successful, we will be instituting further locations. They are fairly cost-effective compared to other, you know, more durable or pavement-oriented features in the roadway, and so we're interested in seeing how they work.
Great, that's great to hear. I'm assuming then we'll probably hear something in the early, like, spring of next year, I guess, once you get all that information back, early next spring. And to follow up with that, with regards to traffic mitigation signage, I noticed, too, that we have, in some areas, have the, some new slowdown signs that we had worked with Viva originally, but these are new signs, and I've noticed them in different areas across the town. I'm just wondering, again, how these were implemented and where they were, and is, is there going to be any signs going to be able, available to the ward counselors? Because I, you know, I mean, again, wanting to be able to, you know, I mean, when, when residents see it in one area, they want it for themselves, so just to follow up with that, with regards to that as well.
Certainly, I'll ask the Director of Engineering to update members of council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, Counselor Twinn, these signs are new signs, so good observation. They are the ones that we had in our traffic mitigation strategy that we shared with council last June. We purchased them towards the beginning of this year, this calendar year, and they are solar-powered, so because of that, they're not the ones that... So because of that, they're not the ones that... Oh, the safety cone SAM signs, okay. Yeah, those are, are also, the same applies. It's from our traffic mitigation strategy that was presented in June. And the lawn signs, though, we have a little bit of a different policy on where they're being located and how they're being located. They're no longer being located on private property. They are on boulevards and on town-owned property. So the counselors are welcome to recommend different roads where you might want to have them. Because you're aware of where the situations are in your wards, where you get a lot of complaints for speeding. And we will put them out there and we'll remove them and rotate them if it's required, but we can leave them there for a period of time as well.
Okay, so just send you an email of where I would like to see those, that would be...
Absolutely, yes, yes. And, and residents can also ask for them, but we encourage the counselors to direct us as to where they would like to see them.
Perfect, thank you so much. And just one more item, again, to do with signage. Well, we've been very aware, and I've talked to Mr. Nohammer about this already, but I thought I'd bring it up formally under new business. We're all very aware of the increase in coyote encounters with residents, specifically along the Tom Taylor Trail near the dog park in that area, Bayview Park. Obviously, it's a large park area with the water, you know, with the river and et cetera. So we've, I believe we put up, and we've, our bylaws have been out there notifying people about with regards to this, but I'm just, I guess I want to formally put it through new business, that we look into permanent signage. I know certain areas of Burlington, I, I can't remember off the top of my head which park had them, but just a little bit about more permanent signage to let people know that there is, you know, I mean, coyotes in the area and what they can do to ensure that their pets are kept as safe as possible.
Mr. Brower?
Yes, through you, Mr. Ray, that is the plan, to transition, to have a look at the effectiveness of the temporary signage and to look at a couple of examples to make sure that we would want to include some, an image of a coyote, so people, funny enough, you may think they would know what it looks like, but a lot of people don't, so that's helpful.
Perfect.
And some tips on dealing with, with that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other items of new business? Being none then, I think the only, there is no public hearing scheduled for this evening. Only items remaining are the closed session. So I'll ask members of council, at six o'clock, should we take a half hour break, have a bite to eat, and then, and then we've ordered in, and then, and then come back to that? Mr. Shump?
Mr. Mayor, I think because we're having a special COW meeting for the one big property, we probably could wrap this one up, I would think, in about thirty minutes, and perhaps you could consider having a short break and then maybe have dinner while we, we go through the property items with you.
Okay. So let's take a ten minute break? Fifteen? We might be through, we might be through in fifteen, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know we were even here. I was expecting you to hold for dinners.
Okay. Let's, let's do a ten minute then, and then, and then we'll come back, or we'll just maybe have a working, have a working, bring back the pizza and then just have a working meal. So I'm calling the meeting back to order. The only items remaining on the agenda to be dealt with are closed session items. Firstly, it's Planning and Building Services Report, two thousand sixteen dash twenty-six, regarding the potential acquisition of land by the town in Ward Four. Secondly, Legal Services Joint Report, number two thousand sixteen dash seven, regarding strategic priority properties update. And item, the third item is Legal Services Closed Session Report, number two thousand sixteen dash eight, regarding proposed acquisition of land by the, the town in Ward Number Six. Could I please have a motion to go into closed session to deal with those that matters? Counselor Twinn, Counselor Kerwin, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you.